All right, good evening. Welcome to the Town Council meeting on Monday, March 29th, 2021 at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers for the Town Council and remote participation by the public. Calling this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town Council is being conducted via a hybrid, remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted in the council chambers, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post the record of this meeting on the town's website at www.ci.southbridge.us as soon as we are able to. A roll call vote will be required for all votes taken under this order. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Thank you. Mary, you don't need to keep your camera on if you want to shut it off during the roll calls, just when you have roll calls and stuff, that'll be fine, okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Considering except the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, March 8th, 2021, do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
I guess that was Counselor Ryan moved it, and Counselor Lazo seconded it. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, just a couple of minor ones. Item 5B, the first line should be "he commended," not commenced. And under item number 12, I thought that one of the key items that I thought was a strong point for Ms. Loto was the fact that she speaks multiple languages, but that's not stated in there.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Any other errors, corrections? See, none, roll call? As amended.
Counselor Catrona.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Counselor Steves.
Yes.
And Counselor Adams.
Yes. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor, Steve.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on the 24th, and that addressed several of the items on tonight's agenda, the Hyde gift, a couple of the transfers, the USDA grant, and we also discussed injured-on-duty considerations, and we talked a little bit about the Town Manager's recent memo on what we need to have versus what we'd just like to have. We have a couple of meetings that have not yet been formally scheduled yet for the budget coming up, capital budget, and I'm just exchanging emails with Yvonne now about setting up another meeting for other miscellaneous items.
Thank you, Counsel. Department of Public Works, Counsel Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you, can you hear me?
Yep.
Can everybody hear me? All right, thank you. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at 6:00 PM right here in council chambers. Several agenda items are on that have been requested by the DPW Director. There was one that I did have a question on, and I probably should have emailed the Town Manager today, but maybe he could look into it for me. Where apparently we have to, we have to pay for our catch basin and street sweeping debris because it says the landfill is closed. I thought we had a contract with the landfill operator, so I would just like clarification on that, because as far as I'm concerned, they're still responsible for it, for everything, all of our disposals. The other thing that I put on the agenda is a Town Hall Facility Discussion. This is refer, uh, this was referred back to our subcommittee by the council chair, or the council at the last meeting. The council chair asked us to work on a plan to address the Town Hall as a whole, and I did send the Town Hall Facility Study out to the councils on my subcommittee and the members, and I hope you had a chance to look at it. It's quite an eye-opener. I took a look at it, and it was, I was amazed how many problems are in this building, so it's, the building is older than the fire station. I know the fire station has gotten a lot of, has been talked about a lot lately, but this Town Hall also needs some reworking, I think, so it's something that I would like to start discussing, and we'll be discussing it tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counsel Catrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No meetings have been held. There are two meetings scheduled, April 6th and April 27th, for discussion of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had a meeting on March 22nd, items number 25 and 27, 25 through 27, tonight's agenda to be discussing. Next meeting is scheduled for April 12th to discuss the budget. I believe we'll have one a few days later than that, or after that, and I also have a meeting with CMRPC on the 31st of March to discuss rail trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Protections of persons' property, Counsel Lazo.
Um, Mr. Chairman, we have agenda items that we'll be addressing in the future, and we do have budget meetings scheduled. I don't have them with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Special Committee reports, the COVID-19 Public Health and Safety Briefing. I see Chief Norman in, Chief Norman in, you're on the line. Do you have anything to add this evening on the briefing on COVID-19?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me and see me okay?
Yep, you're good.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, as you all know, we do have emergency dispensing meetings on a weekly basis. The hospital has reported over the last week or so that we've been able to do up to about 600 inoculations per day. Those continue on and moving forward. This past weekend, they were open for limited hours Saturday and Sunday. I believe the hours were from like 9:00 to 3:00 o'clock. Saturday, they did about 130, and then Sunday, they did 100. Most of those inoculations on the weekend were for the school department, teachers, and the workers within the school buildings. We've also completed what we know of right now, the numbers for the homebound patients, so these are people that cannot get out of their homes due to inability to walk and/or have wheelchair access, or wheelchair van access. Those were completed last week. So we continue to move on. We've had some parking issues come up, but we're addressing them all with the, when they do come up, with the police chief and the head of security at Harrington Hospital, and we will try and work the best we can with our citizens. We have had a few, I'll say complaints. We've adjusted the signage and some movement around the senior center, but everything seems to be going well, and we're just moving forward for the next, we'll say we'll plan for the next six months right now to keep this place open. Any questions?
Any questions to the chief? Thank you. Well, this is going a little smoother than I anticipated, kind of a little different, so Chief Woodson, do you have anything else to add as the other incident commander?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just say I agree with the Fire Chief, and we'll be meeting Wednesday at 9:00. I'm not sure if you already said that, but with security, the upper management of the hospital to address a couple of issues. We've been getting notified on our TIP 411 app, and also on our PD about parking concerns, but we're working with the residents up there, and we're trying to do the best we can.
Thank you, Chief. And I don't see Mr. Pelletier on the call today or on the meeting, so our numbers continue to be steady. Today was the first day that we can report zero new cases, so that's, that's a good thing. However, we're still in the yellow. I anticipate we'll probably stay in the yellow at least another week or so, so we'll continue to monitor the situation, but thank you to all that are participating in this endeavor. We are moving our emergency operations center meetings to a monthly status right now, so we won't have a next update until late April unless things change, but overall, the team has done a fabulous job, and thank you to everyone there. Chairman's announcements, I have no announcements this evening. We have a lengthy agenda, so with the budget presentation as well. So, Mr. Town Manager, your announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of quick announcements. Ms. Dean wanted to let people know with regard to CDVG, coronavirus grants are still available for businesses of five or fewer who are eligible, as well as Congress has approved a 60-day extension to apply to PPP loans to May 31st. For more information on either of these grants, please check the Economic Development and Planning website and look for COVID-19 Emergency Relief. Also, this coming Thursday at 6:00, we will be having a public hearing with MassDOT on the Hook Street project, the traffic improvement project. That's scheduled for 6:00 PM, and I believe that is on the website as well, and I will differ at this time. I have nothing else of significant importance, given the length of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Presentations, we did have a proclamation in the St. George Greek Orthodox Church that Vice Chairman Daniel had offered, and to present, however, there was a scheduling conflict, so Counsel Daniel, I believe our discussion will postpone until next week so that they can be.
That's correct.
Thank you. So moving on, we'll move to the presentation of the fiscal year 2022 budget by Town Manager Michael McCall. Good evening, and welcome on your first budget presentation. Looking forward to it.
You smiling? The way we tried this earlier today, I'm gonna go to the podium, and we'll address everybody from there. I'm just gonna have to make some technical changes before I get there.
And for any citizens that are watching the meeting at home, again, you can access this meeting through our website, through remote participation, and if you wish to have anything brought up during Citizens Forum, we can remote, via remote participation, you are more than welcome to remote into this meeting using that access, either by your phone or by your computer.
I will need to be made the presenter, so.
Yeah.
And I will apologize in advance to the members of the council and the folks that are in chambers. When we were working this out, I was working off my PC with a slideshow. You get to see the entire screen. As those of you will see momentarily, the border around go-to meeting does cut some things off a little bit, but we'll, we'll work with it.
Does that make you presenter?
I'm just, I'm still getting something up here technically here. Let me go to... It's not showing me as presented yet. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, invited guests here in the chambers, as well as the residents and those watching at home. I'm pleased to present you this evening pursuant to Massachusetts General Law and the Town Charter, our fiscal year 2022 budget. Before you, you have packets. We've done things a little bit differently this year. I did present to you a budget memo, which essentially memorializes everything that I'm gonna mention from the podium here this evening. I have a slide presentation that we'll go through. I'll try and go through it at a rather brisk pace, and I will make this presentation available to council members as well as the general public, posting on the website later on. What I intend to do this year is introduce what's known as a financial trend monitoring system. I've used this in the past. It's a creature of the International City Managers Association, the ICMA. A lot of communities use it. What you do to implement a financial trend monitoring system is you take a look at an awful lot of data that comes from the town. I spent numerous hours on my free time culling through the certified accounting financial reports, our annual audit reports, as well as US Census data, census data from the town, labor statistics, information from the Department of Revenue on a variety of different topics. And when you put this all together, you can start to see trends, and you'll see charts and things that tie into what we're doing. What I hope to do in future years is to separate it out and make it a separate presentation, but given that I just came in six months ago, I put it all together for this evening, and also ties into what I think we're gonna do going forward with the budget here. I just want to mention that during the preparation of the operation of the capital budgets, the financial team and I have endeavored to provide stable and consistent budgets with only moderate increases which adhere to our existing Town Council policies. This year's operating budget is a total of $60.2 million, and the capital expenditure requests amount to $5.7 million. As we begin to work on our first budget together, I want to recognize all of our employees and their efforts during this past year, and I thank the entire staff for supporting each other, as well as the community during these unprecedented and difficult times. As we await the end of the COVID-19 pandemic, we continue to face uncertainty and deal with its challenges, disruptions, and lasting effects. Due to this economic uncertainty, all departments were instructed to submit a level service budget for fiscal year 2022, assuming that fiscal 2021 would be the budget base. Further, all departments were instructed that other than necessary to maintain current service levels, no new budgetary increases nor positions nor service expansion would be considered. After which, Ms. Harnoys and I met with each of the department heads and reviewed each budget line by line, making adjustments or reductions where necessary to present you a level service budget. This proposed 60 million, 60.2 million budget is founded on the town's existing financial policy directives and prudent fiscal management, which includes the principle that one-time revenue should only be used for one-time expenditures, as well as sustainable budgeting practices. To maintain all town operations at current service levels, the fiscal 2022 budget relies upon projections of available revenue within the town's limits and financial resources. The budget is based upon an established ceiling of revenue derived from reasonable property tax increases as permitted by Proposition 2.5. Additional revenues include state aid, excise tax, permits, fees, interests, and available funds such as free cash. Much of what I talk about this evening in the financial trend monitoring is really a good key, is a planning tool, it's an indicator, and it helps us to help the community, and one of the key things is our bond rating. We want to maintain that A-minus bond rating we have. If nothing else, we want to be able to improve it. So some of the factors that you will see later on are clear signals to us that we have some things to work upon so that we can ensure to maintain that. As we discussed the other night at subcommittee, we have a lot of major initiatives that will be coming up on the horizon, and we may need to bond for some of those. So it's imperative that we maintain that bond rating to ensure we save money for the community as we go out and preserve our bond rating. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna start my presentation. Very quick overview, most of the statistics up here shouldn't be any surprise to folks... There's a lag, I guess. Using the census data, the population is actually higher than what you see up there, but those are the numbers that I received from the town clerk. Most all of these either came from the DOR or the US Census, as well as some of our certified audit reports, but you can see our unemployment rate for 2020. Anything up there is either current or in parentheses. We do not have a split tax rate, something that affords us the opportunity to attract people and promote economic development. The assessed value of the average single-family home is $214,000. The average single-family tax bill for a house of that value is $4,175. The proposed fiscal 22 budget is $60.2 million. We have an double A-minus rating. Our student population is just slightly over 1,850, and we have four schools, a combination high school, middle school, and four elementary schools. The budget priorities for any community, but especially for Southbridge, we focus on education, public safety, which includes fire, police, DPW, capital infrastructure, as well as health and human services, both within our workforce and the community at large. This is a brief overview again of the financial trend monitoring system. Puts into words what I mentioned a few minutes ago. So this is a breakdown using the projection model that I'm sure you're familiar with. It's also in your materials. This is just an overview of the budget. You can see fiscal year 20 and 21 in the first columns, the projected budget in the third column, and there's the difference between the prior fiscal year. You can see where the most significant changes were. We had a reduction in our assessment with Bay Path, and there's some charges and assessments for charter school and school choice that have gone up significantly, but other than that, if you look at Southbridge Public Schools, general government, we tried to stay below 2%, targeting fairly closely with the Consumer Price Index. This is how the town's current $60.2 million operating budget is allocated. When you look at the breakdown, the vast majority of the monies go to Southbridge Public Schools. They represent 48% of the budget. The next most significant pieces are general government and human services, as well as our benefits and insurance, and those benefits and insurance is always a challenge for every community. And you can see how the others break down as well. Similarly, our pension and OPEB liabilities and our responsibilities there also play a heavy factor on the budget. We had the opportunity to work with Dr. Vilar and his staff, and I put here that his proposed Southbridge Public School budget will be increasing $1.7 million to $35.5 million in FY 2022, which includes $2.1 million in COVID-related grants. You will see on a slide that I have coming up, he has had a bump in full-time equivalents with regard to staffing, but a lot of those are temporary hires to deal with COVID, bus monitors, people in the classroom, and they are being funded by CARES monies, and after the pandemic is over, we anticipate those staffing, the staffing levels will reduce. The appropriation on the town side is an increase of $293,000, which represents a 1% increase over the prior fiscal year, and we are receiving $27.3 million in aid from the state, and that chart below is a breakdown of the aid that we're receiving from the state for our school system. As I mentioned before, we had a slight reduction in the assessment for Bay Path. It went down $36,000, which was a pleasant surprise. These are usually predicated upon enrollment. I included just a quick snapshot of our enterprise funds. As you know, we operate pursuant to Mass General Law, enterprise funds for our sewer and our water operations. There've been modest increases in both of their budgets for fiscal 2022, and there'll be more detail in the overall budget packet. Our capital budget, the amount that was requested was $5.7 million. We're anticipating funding that with $1.1 million of free cash, $4 million from revolving funds, excuse me, excuse me, that's, can't read it, this is $54,000 from revolving funds. There'll be $1.5 million in long-term debt. That's for the pavement management. As you recall, we had a discussion that we would be doing that. There's $2.9 million in other sources. That can be chapter 90 monies and other grant monies, and then the funding totals come to that $5.7 million, and there will be a breakdown of the capital budget in your materials as well. If you were to ask, how does the average family's tax bill break down? Breaks down on the same lines as I showed you the budget before, that $2,000 out of every one of the average $4,175 tax bills goes to the public schools. After that, the next biggest challenges to a tax bill are gonna be your benefits, insurance, general government, and human services, pension, and OPEB liability. Here's a breakdown of the funding sources for the FY 22 budget. Tax revenue from our commercial, industrial, and personal property, as well as our residential, comes to a total of $24 million, which represents 39% of the revenue that we need for the fiscal 22 budget. State aid comprises 46% at $28 million. We have local receipts, which are $5 million, and then we have other available funds rounding out at $2.9 million. As I mentioned before, you can see the trends in our full-time equivalents. This is the most accurate data I could get. I couldn't get past 2017. I was working with Dr. Vilar's staff, Seth Raisin, he provided me the numbers back to 2018. And you can see that Town Hall's been relatively flat. It did increase in 2020. I did look into some of these changes. We've had some changes in staffing at the police department and with our dispatchers, but otherwise, town staffing has remained relatively stable. The same is true essentially for the schools, and as I indicated, there has been a blip or a bump in 2020 with regard to the number of people that he's had to hire for COVID. Again, these are bus monitors and other people in the classroom to ensure that there's safe spacing, and these monies are being, these positions are being primarily funded with CARES monies. This is a breakdown of the revenues for 2020. I know it's difficult in the chambers to see these numbers. We can talk, I will put more detail in the memo and the documents that you've been provided, but you can see how the tax revenues are broken down, as well as our state aid, our local receipts, which are our motor vehicle excise, landfill reimbursement and other receipts, and transfers from our other sources are there, and they total up to the $60.2 million. If we break those revenues down further into bigger chunks, you can see in comparison to where we were in 2015, we have been getting increasing state aid. Our tax levy is also shouldering more of the burden. Where we're seeing a reduction is in local receipts. Again, that comes from your motor vehicle excise taxes, hotel taxes, and meals taxes. On the chart below, you can see the five-year trends, and I put the growth rates in each of those there, that you can see that we've had a 4% increase in our residential property taxes, which is where there's been a substantial increase. But when you get to local receipts, you'll see that our motor vehicle excise tax, the growth rate has slowly been going down, and due to the hit that we're taking in 2020, there's been a substantial change in the growth rate for the hotel tax. A pleasant surprise was our meals tax didn't deviate too much this year, and that is probably because a lot of people did take out and utilized our restaurants here in town during When you start to look at trends, one of the things that the ICMA wants you to take a look at is your tax levy as a percent of your total revenue and your state aid as a percent of total revenue. Well, I indicated before that our tax revenue is going up and our state aid revenue is going up. When you look at those as percentages of the total revenue, you'll see a slightly different picture. On the right, you see state aid is a percentage of total revenue. They, although it's going up, they are not providing us, they are not shouldering as much of the burden as they have in the past. You can actually see some dips during the Great Recession, and that's one of the challenges when you plan a budget is you don't want to be overly reliant on intergovernmental aid, because when there are macro-level disruptions, that you could see the state aid go that you could see the state aid go away, which is what happened during the Great Recession. So being able to have a healthy tax base and fall back on that can help you during difficult times. The chart below shows you our local receipts, and you can see the trend. It had been slowly increasing until we hit 2020, when COVID kicked in. I anticipate that those will bounce back once we come out of the pandemic. You can begin to see the optimism as the summer months are coming. People are getting vaccinated. People are just excited to get back out. And I anticipate with the lifting of the restrictions, both locally and nationally, that we'll start to see revenue come back into town. Using the ICMA indicators, as I mentioned before, when we look at different types of revenues, the ICMA talks about elastic revenues. Those tend to be your local receipts. But what they look at in terms of your property tax revenue, if you have the ability to sustain a healthy tax base, as well as be able to increase revenues from that, it's a favorable trend. And where we've been able to fall back on times when the state aid has been less than we've anticipated, that's a favorable trend. So we would get a favorable mark for our ability to fall back on our local revenues if needed. Just given the current changes with COVID, we've had some reductions in our elastic revenues, which are primarily our local receipts. That trend would give us, that change in the trend would give us an unfavorable rating. But as I said, coming out of the pandemic, if we start focusing on economic development, bringing in restaurants with new liquor licenses, and people coming back to stay at the local hotel, we should see this turnaround. This is a breakdown of the state aid as we've been getting it for the last six years. You can see the biggest changes have been in unrestricted governmental aid and charter tuition reimbursement, as well as funding for our libraries. But what's surprising is our veterans' benefits have gone down. And we still, although it's increasing, don't get all the Chapter 70 money that I think we're entitled to. That's had one of the slower growth rates up there at 3.2%. As I mentioned before, here's the state aid trend. It's been going up slowly over the years, but when you look at it as a percentage of the total revenue, it's actually been declining, where in the bottom, in the gold, our tax levy has been rising up to meet it, which means we, Southbridge, are shouldering much more of the burden, which some people would say is a bad thing, but it's also a good thing because it gives us control in times of, as I said, concern or disruption at the higher levels where we can't control the monies that are given to us. Intergovernmental revenue, again, the trend here is, looking at those charts that I just provided, if we are able to divorce ourselves from total reliance on state aid, that's looked upon as a favorable thing. And where we've been able to carry that burden or shoulder some of the difficulties in the last couple of years through the Great Recession and currently now, that's a favorable trend. The expenses, they also total, because we have a balanced budget, at $60.2 million. It's a breakdown. The biggest increases that you really see are the charges I indicated, school choice and charter school assessments. We have some general operating debt, but always pension is always a concern. That's gone up this year as well. When you break out expenditures, you can see education has been an area of increase between 2015 and 2020. Where you do see some decreases though is in general government and DPW. So money is being directed to our fixed costs, our education, and most of the others, fire has gone down a little bit, but the money has shifted away from DPW towards education primarily, and then our fixed costs. This again is a trend of our total expenditures. Year over year, they have gone up. The growth rates are listed below. The expenditures, growth rates over those six-year period, most of them are at or below the inflation rates for some of those periods. One of the concerns is the intergovernmental assessments, as I said, has been going up much faster than others. And those are the charges for school choice and charter school. Fixed costs, those are a combination of our discretionary expenditures, which may be debt service, pension obligations, things that we have little or no control over. As those continue to rise, that can be considered an unfavorable trend. So I've marked it as such. This is a chart that the Trend Monitoring System that the ICMA looks at, and it really looks at the town's health. The first three-year ratios that you might see in business, the cash ratio, quick ratio, current ratio, those really look at the town's liquidity and what type of cash reserves we have on hand. And as long as those numbers are positive, it indicates the town's in a good position. Similarly, when we look at the solvency issues below with regard to our operating performance, whether we're generating a surplus or a deficit, as well as our expenditures and revenues, including our debt ratios, the town is in relatively good position because the vast majority of those numbers are in the black. And because of that, our liquidity rating with, using the ICMA Trend Monitoring System, is favorable. They like to see 90 days of cash on hand to pay all the bills. We're almost there. I think we're at 81 days, but we have been consistently above about 45 days' worth of cash on hand if we had to pay all our bills. So that's a favorable trend. Operational performance, when they look at net position and they look at all of your assets and liabilities and your deferred inflows and out and such, I mark that as neutral because we've had some positive and negative years. Per capita revenues, the trend there is favorable. We've been able to generate positive revenue per capita. It's been increasing. Similarly, when you're spending more, they look upon it as favorable because you're doing more for your community. Similarly, with regard to our liabilities, the ratio of our current liabilities to our revenues is decreasing, which is also a favorable trend. Our long-term debt trend is, shows that the town's long-term debt liabilities are increasing per capita when compared to assessed values. But you will see a slide later for our 10-year projection. Some of this debt will be rolling off. Some of that has to do with the school debt as well. But we will have capacity in later years to deal with additional borrowing, if necessary, for some of the projects that we have on the horizon. One of the challenges that all communities face is employee healthcare. That has been on the rise for the last decade. However, in the last two fiscal years, due to declining enrollment and changes with people taking it, we have seen some decrease. I mentioned in the document that we were forewarned by our healthcare provider, Maya Health Trust, that we could see a range of increases anywhere up to 6.8% in our healthcare. There was an average, I think, of 2.9% of an increase. We received a below-average increase this year of 2.45% increase in our healthcare costs. And we were able to further reduce that by including an offering for a vision plan. They gave us an additional reduction. So we made out quite well this year with regard to healthcare. But you can see the trends, as I noted below, the, there's been a slight reduction in the last year, so the growth rate has gone down. I listed the number of full-time equivalents, the full-time equivalents per thousand residents, and the CPI is the Consumer Price Index, and you can see how inflation has been trending. So the numbers that you've seen, some of our growth rates, especially year over year with some of our expenses, has mirrored or stayed fairly close to those numbers. Our per capita employee expenditures has been relatively flat, so that's a favorable trend. This particular slide captures our tax levy, and you can see, I only have data covering through 2020, but you can see how year over year, our tax base has been relatively healthy. It's increased. The total tax levy is in blue. Our excess levy capacity is in the gold. In the tan in the top is our override capacity. Our excess levy capacities remained in a band right around $7,000 to $8,000,000 over the last couple of years. That allows you the additional flexibility when needed to raise additional capital without going, excuse, additional revenue without going to the voters for an override. If you had to go for an override or additional funds, the tan portion is what you would be allowed to utilize. When you break down our tax levy, this is a six-year comparison, you can see that the reliance on the residential levy has increased 2%. The commercial levy has gone down. And we, there's no change in our industrial. And the growth rate for the tax levy has been approximately 3.7% over those last six years. This is probably on the minds of many people. This is what the property tax bills have looked like for the last five years. The growth rate has been 3.8% over that time period. The five-year increase on an average family home here in Southbridge has been $749,000. And our ranking out of 351 cities has changed from 281 to 260. We don't have the number yet for fiscal 2021. Again, our property values have been increasing, and they've increased significantly in the past year as a result of COVID. A lot of people have been moving out of more urban areas to more suburban areas. And I know, looking here in Southbridge, that property values have gone up, and that is a favorable trend because it allows, when needed, the ability to generate revenue from the tax base. The ICMA also looks at your tax collection rate. While the trend line shows it going up in the last three fiscal years, we've had some difficulty collecting all of the taxes. So that's calculated by the number, the amount of tax to be collected less the receivables, and it shows the difference. That could be the change in the economy, and we'll be able to have a better understanding in the next fiscal year or so. ICMA sees a downward trend in the amount of uncollected property taxes as an unfavorable trend and is marked as such. Our debt service as a percent of revenue has been going down, which is a favorable trend. And there's our 10-year debt service projection. You can see that we have general fund outstanding debt in the blue, enterprise outstanding in the gold, and the Bay Path excluded debt in the tan. And you'll see that that roll-off continues as we get to 2032. So that's a 10-year projection. You will be afforded some capacity as time goes on. And it's a good idea to keep a level debt service as you go forward, as most people would in their own home. That way, you aren't prepared for rebounding from a lot of debt to a little debt to a lot of debt. It's much easier to manage. Again, because of our debt service being a, declining against our percentage of revenues, that's looked upon as favorable. Our stabilization, that's our fund balance, which has been increasing. However, we have a significant pension liability. The stabilization fund as a percent of our total revenue has been increasing. The, I think I said that backwards. So that was our stabilization fund. So the stabilization fund, those are our cash reserves, and that number has been increasing, and that is a favorable trend. Similarly, free cash, the trend has been positive. It's varied year to year. And there's a trend below it as free cash as a percentage of the budget. Having healthy one-time revenues is also considered favorable. Despite the fluctuation, it's a positive trend. And so that would be considered a favorable trend going forward. This is a slide I had in my mind about our unfunded pension liability and our unfunded OPEB is coming up next. But every other year, they do an actuarial valuation, and they essentially adjust what we owe. So the numbers have fluctuated over the years. But we have a funded ratio. We have a fund balance in that bottom chart, which is the second line in. We are continuing to contribute to that fund. But you can see below it, we have a significant unfunded liability. While our funded ratio has slowly increased, we still have a significant unfunded liability, which did appear in Standard and Poor's Global Rating Letter of 2019, the last time they did our bond rating review. And it was one of their concerns that, that and our pension, OPEB liability. Because of this increasing unfunded liability, it's viewed as a negative. This is our OPEB liability. It's very similar. The only difference here is we do not have much of a fund balance. We only have $1 million in our fund balance, whereas the pension fund is significantly higher, over $30 million. The reason being is we're mandated to contribute to the pension fund. OPEB, you're not. So it's incumbent upon us, based on that Standard and Poor's letter, to continue to put money aside for the OPEB fund, which is other post-employment benefits. Those are life and health insurance benefits for our retirees. And you can see our funded ratio here is significantly different, where we had a close to 60% funded ratio for our pension. OPEB is just barely 3%. Similarly, this is looked upon unfavorably in the financial trend monitoring. Facilities, I gathered the ages of all of the buildings that we have here in town. I have 21 up there. I know that there's been some modifications, additions, and renovations to some of these buildings. But overall, the average age of these buildings is 69 years of age. And when I went through the audited financial statements, they look at your capital assets, all of your vehicles, your buildings, all of your assets, net of depreciation. And you look at that trend line over the last six years, and you can see that the value of our assets has been going down, which, you know, no surprise to the ICMA, showing that without significant investment in capital assets, the asset's net of depreciation will continue to decline, which is an unfavorable trend. I also looked at population trends because they are important to your community. Our overall population has been on a slight increase for the last almost 10 years, with the exception of the last year or so. And again, that could be COVID-related. And you'll see in a moment that's positive. What is interesting though is if you look at that chart on the upper right, in the gold is people under 60, and the blue is people 60 and over. And what you're seeing is a trend where the people under 60 is declining and the people over 60 is increasing. Now, this data came from the Collins Center at UMass Boston, who does a lot of work in this area. And the interesting thing about that is the projection is most communities are going to experience this trend, and it will continue for some time. What it can have an impact on is how your town operates, what become the priorities, and voting trends. So all of this can have an impact on your community. So it's something that it's worth looking at here because it can change how people view their schools, their services. People might rely more on a community center. They might look for more veterans' benefits or rely more on our EMS. So it changes what we need to do and how we have to respond. I put a breakdown of our population by age that's on the left-hand side. And you can see that almost, well, 40 to 50, I can't do the math that quick. But people over 50 years old comprise a good 35% of the population. And we do not have that many people under the age of 20 in the community. And we have a fairly equal split of males and females within the community. The trend for the population overall increasing is viewed favorably. However, that diverging line of increasing people over the age of 60 versus shrinking people that would be going into your school, which would be the lifeblood, the next generation, that can be viewed as unfavorable. that can be viewed as unfavorable. Workforce data, based on the DOR information, shows that the per capita income of Southbridge residents has been on the, the increase for the last almost ten years. And our unemployment rate, conversely, has been decreasing for the last ten years, although it spiked in twenty twenty, again, which is likely due to COVID-nineteen. Those trends, again, the per capita income is favorable, as well as the, the rising employment is favorable. Going forward, I would like to incorporate a more detailed five-year financial outlook. It's very common, so I, I use the growth rates that I had calculated in the early part of this presentation and applied those to those four main sections of revenue that we get, all other local receipts, state aid, and tax levy. And if you look at those, people at home can probably see it better than everybody here, but tax levy is in the gold, state aid is in the blue, local receipts in the yellow, and the gray color is all other. But over the next few years, based on the growth rates that we've had behind us, and again, it's not, you, you can't predict the future. This is only a projection based on past data. But if the trends were to continue, with the exception of COVID, this is where our revenues would be going in the next few years through twenty twenty-eight. And it's a positive trend, and that's what we had prior to COVID-nineteen, and there's no doubt in my mind. I'm optimistic that when life returns to normal, we will continue to generate these types of revenues through our local receipts and state aid. So we've gone through this slide by slide, and I've showed you the, the different favorable, unfavorable in ratings, and there was one neutral. So this is the summary of all of those different trends that I chose to pick out. There's quite a few of them in the Evaluating Local Condition book that is put out by ICMA. But most of the ones that are listed as favorable, with the exception of the, the pension and the OPEB, I think are ones that we can work on, is uncollected property taxes, expenditures by function, you know, fixed costs may be a bit of a challenge. We can work on recruiting different people to the community. We can certainly work on our maintenance effort, which is our infrastructure, capital assets. We are going to be going out and refunding some of our long-term debt. That's something that we've already discussed here with the council. So there are things that we can use. As I said, these are, they're indicators, they can give you warning signs, it can be used as a planning tool, and it's something I think we should utilize going forward. When you put all that together, a lot of businesses or, and other groups use what they call a SWOT analysis. You look at your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And based on that, I view our strengths as our cash reserves, our tax revenue, and our property values. Our, our weaknesses right now are our levy capacity, the fact that our state aid could be higher, and our elastic revenues, our local receipts have been in flux primarily due to COVID. Our opportunities are our bond rating. As I said, we're a double A minus. I think if we continue to work on some of these issues, we get our, we work on putting additional monies to OPEB, stabilization, we have good cash reserves, we, we didn't increase this budget tremendously year over year. I think those are the things that were highlighted in the Standard and Poor letter. I think we'll easily be able to maintain that, or that is my hope. But if anything, I would like to work towards increasing that, and by getting a better bond rating, we should be able to get more favorable rates, which would save the taxpayers money. So I think there's opportunity there. Our, our debt structure, our new tax growth, that's encouraging development and capital improvement are our opportunities. Our threats are, again, are the fixed costs and those non-discretionary items. The fact that we, we, and I don't, my parents are in their eighties. I, I don't view the aging population as a threat, but you want to have a balanced community, and I only put that there as if we have to work with all generations in the community. But if we, if we become too lopsided, it can, it changed trends in town, whether it be need for schools versus the need for EMS, all the things I said before. So it's something that we just need to keep an eye on. But most importantly, the threat, I think, here to us with our bond rating and going forward is working on our pension and OPEB liabilities. And that concludes, and I, I know that the, our motto here is Southbridge, the eye of the Commonwealth, but I would like to add that it's Southbridge with an eye toward the future, because I've been optimistic about what I've seen since I've got here. I've learned more about the community. As I said, we, when we met with Will Canoyer, who's our principal assessor, and we talked about the tax levy, he, he showed me the maximum tax levy, and he showed me the projected tax levy, which was a three point five percent increase. But when you imply new growth, the, the increase to the tax levy is going to be about two percent, which is a little above the, the CPI for the current year. But that would represent about an eighty-seven dollar increase to the average taxpayer with a home of two hundred and fourteen thousand. So that four hundred, four thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollar tax bill is going to go up to approximately four thousand three hundred and twenty-two, about an eighty-seven dollar increase, based at, at the moment, using last year's, the FY twenty-one numbers, because we haven't calculated, but that's, that's an approximation, but just to give you an understanding. In closing, I just want to express my sincere thanks to the financial management team. Ms. Harnoy is our finance director who's here, Melissa Zawodski, who is our treasurer and collector, as I mentioned, our principal assessor, and IT manager, Will Canoyer. They were valuable in their assistance to me in this first year to develop the materials for you and the community to consider. I wanted to thank all the department heads for their patient cooperation and contributions as we worked together for this budget for the first time, as well as Dr. Valar and his team. And I also want to thank my staff, Yvonne Tortis, Kim Ferran, and Cheryl Ryan, for all their hard work along the way, producing these materials and, and helping me in my first six and a half months here. And, and also, I just, although as not a member of the town, I, I thank Professor Douglas Snow, PhD at Suffolk University, who turned me on to the ICMA's Financial Trend Monitoring System quite a few years ago. I enjoy spreadsheets and numbers, and he got me utilizing this as a tool for one of my prior communities. I think it's a valuable tool, and in, the following years, I look forward to pulling that out. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, that is my presentation for the budget. And if you have any questions now, I'm happy to entertain. I know you have a lengthy agenda, and this will be going through subcommittee, various subcommittees for analysis and questions, so it's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions, comments to the town manager at this time? Counselor Stu?
The only one that I have at the moment is, could you make sure you send that presentation to all of us?
Yes. My, my plan is later this evening to send it to each one of you, as well as have it placed on the town's website, either this evening or first thing tomorrow morning.
Excellent, thank you. It was very well presented. There's a lot of detail in there, so I want to take it, take some time to read through some of the other, some of the slides that you sent up that obviously we don't have in our packet here.
Yep.
So I don't, specifically, I have any questions at the moment, but I'm sure I will. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For you, I want to say thank you for your hard work and all your staff. I think it's a great job. Hopefully, everybody will understand. I, I don't see that for a long time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hamzah?
I think Counsel Ryan, didn't you have? Oh, I thought you did. I just want to say negative, Mr. Chair, to the town manager. I know through the last six months, you've been redeveloping the town and what, what you've been doing, and fixing a few things here and there that may have been bent a little bit. And I want to thank your staff for all the hard work that they have done, and the time and effort, even on your time off, that you've dedicated to this town already. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Markaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you for the presentation. It was very, very good presentation, and I'm looking forward to getting, working more with it. There's just a couple of things. One, if you can find me a house around here for two hundred and fourteen thousand, could you pass it my way, please, because I don't see any that low. I think the median value of a home around here is closer to three hundred thousand right now. It's been going up quite a bit. The other couple of things, there was some things that I was thinking of as you were going along. Unemployment rate is pretty high, and I think that is leading to the younger generation leaving this town. There's just no jobs around here. That's what we really need. We need jobs, jobs, jobs. You want the younger generation to stick around? They need employment. And for us older generations, such as myself, that are sticking around, we need our taxes lowered. So, thank you.
Those are the challenges. Yes, and I'm happy to help work on it.
Thank you. Counselor Lava?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you and your staff for the presentation. I, I like your approach, or as you call it, a tool, to start out the budget season with projections of some hard numbers, where you actually can believe that Southbridge can come back. But I think there's a lot of work ahead, and I think there's going to be some things discussed in the future, as, you know, other councils will, will mention jobs and, and infrastructure and various other things. I mean, there's only one way, and I'll continue to say it, I know how to eat an elephant, it's one bite at a time. But I, looking at the projection numbers and looking at your tool that you are looking, using to go forward, I just want to say it's different than I've, anything I've ever seen. It's refreshing, and I'm looking forward to the budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the manager. I also want to thank you for your thorough presentation. This is my first time on this side of the dais watching this presentation, but I've watched plenty previously, and this is a far more in-depth analysis and presentation of the budget than I've seen in the past, so I thank you for that. As it was mentioned by another counselor earlier, the number of young kids leaving this town is, is higher. As one of that generation that chose to move into town, I see a lot of opportunity here, and I'm glad to see that. Not only this council, but you as manager also see the opportunity to expand and create jobs and help keep people here and attract people to this community. I'm looking forward for going through this. I also love budgets and numbers and spreadsheets. I believe budgets tell me more about your values than what you say. And it tells me what your priorities are, and I look forward to going through with this and working with everybody on council to come up with a, well, finish up this budget process. Thank you. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Stu?
Um, yeah, actually, something that you guys all said made me think of something else. I just quickly looked up the U.S. Census figures for the town, and you cited fifteen five twenty. Census in twenty-ten was sixteen seven nineteen, and what they cite for July first of twenty-nineteen was sixteen eight seventy-eight. Of course, their numbers have always been a little weird anyway, so it's always been hard to identify what the actual number is, and it's been floating for around seventeen thousand for as long as I've been here, so.
So there's census data that you get in the decennial census, and then they have the American, it escapes me, they do an estimate.
Yeah.
And they generate it every year, and the DOR does give you a population number. But when you go speak to the clerk, that can be different, because
Yeah, I know.
We have all these different censuses. So some of the numbers that I have, I'm happy to provide the sources that I use for all these. I, I do keep all of the, the links and documentation, because I rely on those, and I intend to rely on those in future years, so that I'm using the same pool of data when I'm making comparisons.
Yeah, I was just curious, because I know that those numbers have been weird, and I know, I know from, from when we were involved, we're talking about the census stuff earlier this year, this past year, and there were concerns about having to not, they, they weren't able to reach out to everybody, they weren't able to get in contact with them, so they have to kind of massage the numbers to get to whatever they come to. Whereas I would think that, honestly, I would think that the town clerk's numbers are probably more accurate, which is, if those are the ones you're using, that makes more sense.
Her numbers are lower than what I used in one of the other slides, and in my prior community, that was the same. The census numbers were higher than what my town clerk in that community had told me what we had, by a margin of, you know, well over five percent. Because we had a community, I think the census thought we had thirty-five thousand, we had thirty-three thousand, so, you know, a good six percent difference.
Yeah, okay. Do you think that that had, that goes, numbers have any impact? Obviously, they would have an impact on the state and federal aid we're getting, because they think we're getting, we have more than we have.
So that was
Or maybe it's the other way around, and their numbers are totally screwed up, so.
If, if you recall, last fall, I talked about it, I met with some, I met with Severina Rio, so we had talked with the census folks. We were going to make a last-minute push to get out the word about the census, and the federal government put an end to it, basically overnight. And we had already, we were working on a literature doc, drop and a phone campaign of using free resources from the federal government and the state. And unfortunately, the plug was pulled on that, because we recognize, as you say, the, the numbers that we hear, have here often drive the, the share of what we get from state and federal funding.
Hmm. Okay, thank you.
Counselor? Anyone else? Counselor Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank the town manager for an absolutely spectacular presentation. I would ask that the citizens at home watching this tonight, take the time to go to the website and look at the presentation and see what the numbers are. You can't fool around with the numbers. The numbers are what the numbers are, favorable or unfavorable, and there's no hiding. We're, we're looking to be very transparent, and this is as transparent, I think, as it's been in, in a few years. I'd like to thank the town manager again and his staff for a high level of proficiency, obviously being displayed, and they're working for the town, and his financial team. I do have one question, and that is, is there a rule of thumb that the auditing firms have in terms of the balance between local receipts versus grants and state aid being used to fund the town revenues?
Well, you have Ms. Harnoy behind you. I, I would think that they would view grants differently, because those are, can essentially be one-time, or thought of as a one-time, a non-cyclical revenue, whereas you have a better idea of what your cyclical revenues would be year over year. You can look at those prior years and project with hotel meals revenues. Grants, you can't tell. You can get them one-time, some might last for several years, like our CDBG, but I, I would imagine that they are viewed differently, and Ms. Harnoy is good comment, but I, I think there's a, in my mind, there's a distinct difference in the type of revenue that they are and how I would categorize them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, for the presentation. I know that when you started here on day one, you had already started working on this, and I know how much time you put into it, so a lot of after-hours, given everything else that you do in the day-to-day operations of the town of Southbridge. But for me, coming on, longtime school committee and serve on council for as long as I have, this is probably the most detailed analysis of a budget that I've seen in, in my memory. And I think the fact that you, you, we're taking a deep dive, you, your team, and now the town, where we can make sound decisions on those types of trends and projections, and not just coming to council, as we've previously heard, that, like, we're a poor town, that, that wasn't said once at all this evening, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate the fact that the analysis of the challenge is good, bad, and indifferent. That gives the council going forward a sound basis to make good rational decisions. The fact that you also took an analysis of what our capital buildings look like and touched on that as well, is eye-opening not only to us, but to the community. Nobody wants higher taxes. I don't want higher taxes. I know how big my tax bill went up in the last two years for a variety of reasons, given assessments and all that. But as a council, we also have to balance the needs of the community as well, public safety, roads, and schools. So I look forward to the conversations of the department heads when they come in to justify, just as I'm sure they've justified to you when you put your budget together, what the needs of their departments are. And as we went through this year and last year, where things were not funded to the level they were, and we do transfers, how that process is going to work and how it all balances out. Those challenges don't go away. Public safety, I've, I've said from the start that, yes, we have younger people moving out, we have to look at why younger people might not be moving back into town as well. One of that is the schools. So how do we work with the schools to make sure that they're adequately funded, but also for them to justify to the council and the community with the enrollment that you've presented this evening is less than what they've had over a number of years? So that's a, a conversation to have with the school districts as to how you balance number of students with the challenges that you have. If we do have an aging population, firefighters EMS to respond to that, as well as, so those, all those things, to me, go into making the community an attractive place. And I know we're working on economic development through the downtown and other areas of town with the overlay districts that we've passed. So I like the optimism that you've presented this evening to lay out a sound foundation going going forward. So I look forward to the various budget discussions throughout, and the honesty that we'll have with those discussions as we have a basis for those numbers. So thank you for tonight, and I look forward to working with you during this process.
Thank you all.
I do want to say, being in council chambers, it's nice to have this kind of conversation, because I think the conversation would be much different when you try to do it on cable, and I'm sure that it's going out in a great fashion to the community, so thank you. Citizens Forum, again, for the citizens out there watching either on YouTube, cable access, you do have an opportunity to call in with the phone numbers on our agenda, as well as through remote access. So with that, is there anyone? Anyone? So hopefully, we don't have to do this hybrid type of approach for too much longer, where we can actually have residents in. I'm going to caution it as we stay in the yellow until we maybe move to the green, we'll revisit that decision. But as we are in the yellow community, we'll be cautiously optimistic that by the end of this fiscal year, we'll be able to have citizens here. So if there's nobody else, we'll move on. Item 10, vote to confirm the reappointment of Caitlin Spencer as Inspector of Animals in accordance within the provisions of Section 5, Chapter 129 of Mass General Law, effective May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Did this go to you, sir?
Yes.
Ms. President?
This went from the subcommittee, and it was voted favorable.
Thank you. Chief Whitson?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. The section is Section 15. I mentioned it on our PPP. It's Chapter 129, Section 15. You're going to read Section 5.
Okay.
But other than that, I have nothing unless there's any questions.
Okay. Any discussion? See none, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Item 11, vote to accept the donation, the amount of $1,000 from the Hyde Dexter Russell Foundation to be used for the Southbridge Holidays Vision Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Steve?
Yeah, that went through our subcommittee, and we recommended unanimously.
Thank you. Anything else? I don't think Denise isn't on, right? This is their annual foundation that they give to the Holiday Visions Program. We thank them for their donation to the community and for that program. Last year, given the COVID, it was still a great evening, so we look forward to maybe an in-person event this year. So, any further discussion? See none, roll call.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12, vote to accept a grant from Med Project LLC in the amount of $1,300 for the purpose of supporting law enforcement agencies in the collection and disposal of unwanted medicine, and authorize the town manager to sign and execute all required paperwork contracts relating to the grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Counsel Lazo? Go to yours.
This was brought up at subcommittee, it was unanimous of all, voted favorably.
Thank you. Any questions of the chief? Chief, you have anything else you want to add?
No, sir, there's no question.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
And Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 13, vote to accept an opioid prevention grant from the Pharmaceutical Research and Manufacturers of America Pharma in the amount of $5,000 to be used for opioid abuse prevention programs in the community, and authorize the town manager to sign and execute all required paperwork contracts relating to the grant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Counsel Lazo?
This one also was voted unanimous, favorable, at subcommittee.
Thank you. Chief Whitson, anything else? Any questions of the chief, I guess? Counsel Marquetti?
I have, Mr. Chairman, through you, I was just wondering, what program is this going to be used for? What is the opioid prevention program?
Chief Whitson? Did you hear the question?
Yes, and if I could, through you, Mr. Chair, this program is going to fund our detectives to go out into the community with a representative from our hospital to help with our opiate addiction. People who come in, people who we arrest, people who we bring to court for substance abuse issues, we're going to follow up with it. We're not just going to leave them at the hospital, we're not just going to medicate them. These monies are going to enable us to follow up on everything. Everything that comes through the door, whether it's an overdose, even if people don't ask for it, we're going to show up at their doorstep the next day and ask them if they need treatment, if they need help, we'll leave them the information. And we've even mentioned working with the firefighters slash paramedics on this. So it's a great program. It's a start, it's a small amount of money. The Mass Chiefs of Police are funding it to see how it goes. It's kind of a pilot. I know that some of the bigger cities have done this already, so it's a first for us, and we're going to see how it goes.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel? Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to say that this is a welcomed and wonderful grant to be getting. I'm happy to see that Southbridge is doing work on this. I did some work on this in Worcester, helping launch the first public-private partnership with the state of Mass to help launch an illegal exchange program in Worcester. So I'm really happy to see that we're doing some work out here, and I thank the chief for this on opioid prevention. This is only a first step. I think we need to do more research and find any more opportunities to help address opioids and opioid addiction in our community. So thank you, Chief, and thank you to the subcommittee for recommending this favorably.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? See none, roll call.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 14, vote to accept the fiscal year 2021 firefighter safety equipment grant from the Department of Fire Services reimbursement program to be used to purchase three mobile laptop computers and two portable APX radios with UHF/VHF capabilities for the total project amount of $15,995.50, with $15,000 to be reimbursed by the grant, and $995.50 funded to come from an operational account within the fire department's current budget, and authorize the town manager to sign and execute all required paperwork contracts related to the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second. Counsel Lazo?
This also was voted unanimous, favorably, at subcommittee.
Chief Norman?
Nothing unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Counsel? See none, roll call.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, if you have anything you want to add at any time, just give me a wave, but I figured we went through subcommittee, if anybody had any questions, I'm sure you were able to answer. Item 15, vote to approve a transfer request from account number 001210.518100, witness fees, to account number 001210.534200, printed special forms, in the amount of $1,500 to cover the purchase of additional 21D Town Bylaw Violation Books.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Lazo?
This was voted unanimous, favorable at subcommittee.
Thank you. Chief? Do you have anything else?
Unless there's any questions, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Counsel Marquetti?
The only thing that I wanted to say, I said the same thing at the subcommittee level, is when you take money out of one budgeted item such as witness fees, and you're shifting it over to something else, then the problem that I see is that, well, as the chief said, because there's no courts this year, they don't need the money for witness fees. But what about next year, when courts pick up again? Then you'll need money for witness fees. And, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems to me that if you save the money for witness fees, then we wouldn't have to keep replenishing it, which in turn causes the taxes to go up. So that's my only complaint about it, that instead of shifting money like that out of a budgeted item, that they get it from somewhere else, and then we don't have to raise the money for the witness fees. That's my only question about it. You know, I can see where they need these things, I'm not opposed to, I'm not saying they don't need them, I'm just questioning why. Why do we keep shifting things out of budgeted items, which causes tax, well, I'll yield, thank you.
No, no, I'm just trying to understand, when you say "save it," could you elaborate then? You're going to save it for the taxpayers, but you're going to get it from some other place. There's only limited amounts for us to get it this year, so what would be your thought process on trying to do that?
Well, let's say you have witness fees that you don't need this year, and you're using that money, so then next year, you're going to need the same amount of witness fees. So rather than us raising the taxes to replenish the witness fees, if they save the money in there, then we wouldn't have to replenish it. That's all I'm saying. I guess, does that not make sense?
Well, no, because you can't carry that money over to next year, revert back to free cash. So you can't save the money, so you have to spend everything within the same fiscal year.
I understand that, but the money would be there, that we wouldn't have to raise taxes again, right? It would be somewhere. Money doesn't just, you know, disappear.
Yeah.
It does in Southbridge, but not
Yeah, it's a, Mr. Town Manager, if you have any, no?
That's fine.
Counsel Ryan, then Counsel Lazo?
My question's already been answered, thank you.
And Counsel Steves, you had your hand up.
I did, but I'll yield to him.
Counsel Lazo?
I totally understand where the previous speaker's coming from. In a more conservative world, where we would return all unused money back to the main carver and then reallocate in the next budget session, I totally understand that. But at the same time, we've had this discussion on budgeting and how budgets work, and it's like, sometimes it's a fluid budget in a department. And I remember not too long ago, that they would automatically transfer without ever coming in front of the council, and, up to a certain amount. And to me, the transparency of coming in front of the council and saying, "Look, we have this surplus because of the lack of court, but we have a shortage because of this reason." That transparency of handling the tax dollars through the council at the subcommittee, then I think is open and transparent, where the taxpayers know why we took the money from this internal account upon the recommendation of the chief. He runs the department. And then we take it, and we discuss it at subcommittee, then we come for a full vote to council. That's part of what I call that fluid budget process, where when you start a budget, you'd love to have it perfect, but how do you guess how much snow you're going to get? How many tickets are you going to write? A lot of it's a guesstimation by the experience of your department heads. And in some cases, you have a lack of use in one and more use of the other. I just think it's a common sense approach, and I'm glad that we now do the fluid in front of the subcommittee and the main committee of council. You show that transparency of, hey, taxpayers, this is your money, and this is what's going on, this is why we're going to do this. That's the upside to what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do recall, the chief has been very vocal in coming to council during budget season, saying, "These line items aren't budgeted to what I need them to," and the former, and through council, too, "Well, we'll worry about it at the end of the year, if we have monies, we'll transfer it." And I do understand the whole budgeting and trying to get your best guesstimate and saving the taxpayers' money for next year. I get all that, and that's the balance. But at some point, so, the chief, and we have a bylaw that says loud music out of cars, is that correct?
Yes.
That would be a chapter 21D, right disposition?
It's also Mass General Law, Phase 2, you can do either one.
Right.
For citation or 21D.
Right. So, you know, people in town want enforcement, we need the tickets to enforce that loud music. Everybody's complaining about it, so we do need the tools for them to do their job. And I look forward to, I guess, the town manager just gave us projections based on past data and revenue projections, and that's what the chief's, I'm sure, during the budget presentation, will do the same thing. Trends, projections, and the like. So Counsel Steves, did you have anything else to add?
Counsel Lazo pretty much said what I was going to say, sir.
Just a quick second. When we go through that budget process, and this is the reason why I want to bring it up, Mr. Chairman, through you, you bring up the valid point that when we hold the department heads accountable to their budget, we, you know, we go in there, and they come in conservative, and all of a sudden, they want their budget, you know, we want to get it as tight as we can get it when we're working on the budget. But we also have to understand, the chief being conservative in his budget to begin with, might run into a problem with a couple of accounts here and here as we roll down because of the activities. I mean, this is why I think this process works very well right now, and I want to continue enjoying the workings of the transparency. Thank you.
Counsel Steves, you also?
Counsel Adams? Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, like Counsel Lazo said, it's a common sense approach. I mean, even doing my budget every single year, there's a mistake that's made, or all of a sudden, I get an extra check for some reason, or I have an extra bill because my dog gets sick. I mean, it just happens that way, even though I budgeted for my dog, you know, $5,000 to feed it, and all of a sudden, I get bacterial meningitis, it costs me $5,000 to treat it. So, but I do appreciate that the police chief going, and I love this form because it gives an explanation, and we invented this a couple of years ago for this reason, but the fact that the police chief put it in writing, purchased additional 21D Town Bylaw violations, there's been an increase in issuance of these violations by officers and animal patrol officer. This increase could not have been budgeted for last year. Things do happen, and, you know, we've asked the department heads to come to us with transfers. We've told them exactly what we want them to do, and now that they do it, I just don't want to beat them down for coming to the town council for transfers every single minute. This is what we've asked them to do, this is what the charter says, and this is what we've, we continue to do that. But when you level fund a budget, things are going to happen. And so we're doing the best we can. And so, we're doing the best we can. I know the department heads, the town manager, finance is doing the best they can. I just don't want them to feel beat up every single time they come here to ask for a transfer, because things change. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Markey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm not beating anybody up, I'm just asking questions. I think we have a right to ask questions up here. That's why we were elected, and I'm asking questions. That's all. I understand the need for this. I just question why we keep transferring about a certain funds, that's all. And if we need the money for writing up people for playing their music too loud, then by God, I think we should use that money, because people are playing their music way too loud. And you heard that the other day when we were walking downtown.
Me too.
Walking downtown, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I look forward to the further discussion. And just to the previous speaker's point, the chief would still need this transfer. The fact that we are in a situation with COVID, that's the one account that we have some capacity to transfer monies to. Otherwise, he'd be here, and we would say, "We got to take it out of council reserve or stabilization." So those are the other parts of money that you would want to take it out of. So, one way or another, work has to be done. It's just the fact that he has the capacity to do that, either through the courts not being open, which is true, or positions where we allocate funds to hire somebody, and then they leave and that position's open. So otherwise, if it was so tight, so, one way or another. But we'll look forward to further discussions through the budget. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, roll call.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
And Council Markey?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 16, vote to approve a transfer request from account number 001210.518100, witness fees, to account number 001210.545000, janitorial housekeeping, the amount of $1,000, to cover the increase in cost to continue to sanitize the police headquarters on a daily basis due to the ongoing global pandemic, COVID-19. Is there more? Second. Discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This applies to actually many of these transfers. I've been curious since I arrived here, your transfer policy. And while I was going through the budget preparation, I did look at your policy book and your various policy directives, and there are a handful of financial policy directives, and I can take it up here, because this is on the agenda. I do think it would be a worthwhile endeavor if we took some time to review our policy book, especially our financial policies. I do see that you did put a policy in place, it's in the book, that brings a lot of these interdepartmental transfers here, and there's a dollar amount limitation on some of these in many instances. Prior communities, things of this level didn't make it to the body, the legislative body here, or even at the town meeting, or to the board of selectmen. A lot of times, interdepartmental transfers, these amounts, even higher, were dealt with by the financial team without burdening the selectmen or the city council, the town council in this case. So it may be worth reviewing some of those policies in general, but addressing this particular issue, it could minimize some of the items on your agenda. It's just something to consider, and it's just my two cents on this particular agenda item.
Thank you. Council Lazo?
Oh, yeah, this came to subcommittee, and it was favorable, unanimous. Just a quick comment, I'm going to go back to the old line, tell Mr. Chairman that when you know the history, there's a reason why these policies were put there, that were created because of another bad policy, as some newcomers thought, to change. I personally don't think it's a burden on the council. I think it's a form of transparency, where during budget, there would be like some serious accusations about transfers and why is this, and, you know, and the thing is, this basically opened it up and created this transparent transfer, which is a lot of his boilerplate, I agree with you. But the thing is, what it did was, it cleaned up the perception. And the one thing we learn in Southbridge is, perception is everything. Although we know the truth, some people like to run with the perception and take a lot more time debating it than actually putting a policy in place that actually works. And I think this was created because of another situation. And as I sit here today, the process is there. I think Council Adams has said it properly, he doesn't want to make a department head feel like you don't, we're all on the same team here. And we all work with the taxpayers' dollars, and I think with the process, the paperwork, the chief, the council, the manager, I think it goes through fluidly, and it's not a big deal. It's a quick conversation, chief goes to subcommittee, and it's a done deal, and if you want to, and there are no bad questions, the councilors. You know, you are up here to ask questions, but the thing is, when a process is put in place to solve a problem of money within a department, if you're not, if you don't want to transfer it, come up with an idea where you're going to get the money to pay for it. I don't have a problem not transferring it from there. It was recommended by the chief, because he thought it was the best place to come from. And the council can change that, and say, "No, I want to take it out of free cash." But just don't vote "no," "no, I'm not going to give you the tickets." That's the problem with perception. So I think we're all in the same boat, I think we're on the same line item here, I think we want, we are councilors. We give a directive to the chairman and manager, tells the chief, "Stop that noise. Oh, I need a few more bucks. Oh, I can't fund that. Wait a minute. We gave them a directive to put a speed trap, put a move on this, loud music. Back it up. Back it up when you have a transfer, you put it in there, transfer the money, and you solve the problem. Doesn't matter to me where you get the money, but just don't vote "no." Come up with an idea, free cash, revolving account, whatever you want to do, and I would support something like that. But I yield towards the chief because the way the other account was left, because there is no court. I thought it was a good idea. Thank you.
Council Catron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Council Lazo said it best, and I'll repeat some of the things that he said. I don't find it a burden on the council at all. It takes a couple of minutes, it gives us great opportunity at subcommittee to vet the things out, to have a better understanding of what the chiefs are looking for. Gives us transparency, and again, perception. It's very, very big. I like the policy that was put in place, again, because of the past. So, I am in favor of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Council Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. As has been already stated, there's a lot of history around the transfer policy. I was on the general government subcommittee when we were having this long discussion about the transfer policy, and we beat it to death, to put it bluntly. The fact of the matter is, we were having some issues around, it all started around a forklift. And it's really important, at least to me, that we keep that transparency going forward just because of previous issues. Not, it's not a reflection of you or any of the other, of the current staff, but based on the history of transparent, lack of transparency around certain issues, it's not something I would be comfortable with changing at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion on this line item?
Undisputed clarification is for people who are watching out there. We did all the discussion that Council Ryan just mentioned, based on Section 12, 10-12 of the Charter, which specifically states, "The town council may, upon recommendation of the manager or through the finance director, transfer part or all of any unencumbered appropriation balance among programs within a department." Yada, yada, yada. And that's where it all falls down to, Mr. Charter.
Council Markey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So back to the agenda, actual agenda item here. Like I said, I know they need the money for COVID-19, issues surrounding COVID-19. The thing is, Congress just passed a bill for COVID-19 relief. I know the town of Southbridge is going to get some money for it from that. The town manager has sent out a menu that could be anywhere from three to five million. So I would rather see, Council Lazo says we should suggest another revenue source. I would rather see us wait for that COVID money. It's coming, I know we're going to get it, and I would like to see us wait that way, because you just know that if we don't do that, when we do get the money, they're going to line up for money for other things. So I would rather see the money saved for, I would rather see this saved until we get the COVID relief money. Thank you.
The work needs to be done now. We don't have the money, the reimbursement, and in the passing, our finance director is here. Any monies that we've spent on COVID, out of our existing budget, has been reimbursed back to the general fund budget. So we had town council money that we have in an account that we set up for CARES money, well, for money that we spent. We submitted a bill, once the funding, we had the funding, it was reimbursed back. We transferred money as a council to the fire department to pay for overtime expenses in the fire department. When the CARES money came in, it gets reimbursed back to our general fund. So a lot of those accounts, you have to spend the money out of the general fund first, and then submit reimbursement. Am I incorrect on anything that I just said, Ms. Haronoyes? I am correct. So by us spending the money, we will then put that, and Karen, Ms. Haronoyes and the finance department will mark that as a COVID-related expense, and once we get the final approval, all that money would be reimbursed to the town. Then at the end of the year, if we closed out, it would then go to free cash. Am I correct on all of that, Karen? So, it's just an accounting principle, that's all. So one way or another, we can then put it to, charge it off to a COVID account, or CARES money that comes in. Do you have a follow-up to that?
Oh, I just wanted to know, if you're going to continue to comment on everything, shouldn't you step down as council chair?
I'm addressing a point of clarification.
There was no point of clarification on my part.
I don't have to state point of clarification. You asked a question about where we're coming.
I made a suggestion, that's all I did. Thank you.
So I'm giving an explanation of prior past practice. If you wish for me to step down, I don't think I have to. If you wish to call a point of order, we'll rule on a point of order. Council Steve?
I was going to say the same thing you just said, actually.
I'm just very familiar with it, council, because we've been dealing it with the emergency operations center that we, as a team, have worked on, and we have this discussion every emergency operations center, so we're pretty intimately involved in that process, so I'm familiar with it, so I'm commenting on that. You asked a question, I answered the question, and asked clarification of our finance director. And I guess, to Council Lazo's point, sometimes you have to know the history. And I'm sorry if I happen to know some history on how we've been doing it, been intimately involved in the budget process and reimbursement processes. So I'm clarifying the position and the question that you have. I apologize if I'm upsetting you. Council Lazo?
I do not think you're out of order. I think if the previous speaker reverted his question to the manager, he would have answered the question. He put the question to you, you answered the question on a point of clarification. But again, to the policy that we work, and I'm glad that the previous speaker asked the question, because the clarification of COVID-19 monies being used, we will get reimbursed, and it will go back into the coffre. That's a good thing. And if the question wasn't asked, the public wouldn't know, and you wouldn't answer the question. It's all good here. But I'm going to go back to what you said initially, this needs to happen now for the police department, and if there's no other way to do it, and it's reimbursable, I'm voting favorable.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? Council Dow?
I believe Council Markey, he have a right to ask, and I believe Council Jovan, he have a right to explain. And I think these money, it's not like, it's already in the account, I believe, in the possesses of the police department. He want to transfer them to different account. He think it's being used more from where they are right now. Summer is here, more activity, coronavirus at the end, hopefully, more people out. And I don't believe extend work today for tomorrow, because tomorrow you might get more. So let's finish work today for today, and tomorrow we might get different work. Thank you.
And let me just make this point as chairman. I have no problem with councils asking questions. None whatsoever. And I would defer to my good friend, Council Lazo, or Council Catrona, Council Steve's, who has seven-plus years of experience on this council, to say, right, seven, eight, maybe? Years of council experience? Defer to our colleagues up here to answer questions. It's great to have healthy debate. Your question was not out of line at all, and we have a wealth of experience sitting here on this dais that can answer questions. I don't want any council to feel that they can't answer, ask a question. And if we can debate that question, that's how you have healthy government, true and transparent government, by the wealth of experience that you have sitting on here. Thirty, forty-plus years with Council Lazo, different roles in different public bodies and agencies, that's how you move your government forward with the experience that you have. Council Adams, you have anything else to question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I'm not mistaken, at the PPP meeting, this same question was brought up, the same answer was given. So, on a clarification and being transparent here, as I think, I want to thank, I mentioned that we came up with this idea. Actually, I think Chairman Jovan came up with this idea of the transfer, and I believe it was Mrs. Haronoy who came up with this procedure, so, and probably some of her staff. So I just wanted to give credit where credit was due. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Council Ryan. Yeah, because a transfer would come, and we didn't have any backup material, and we had a conversation through experience and conversations that said, "We used to do this on the school side. Give us a form that says what your transfer is, and give us the account numbers," and yeah, transparency. Any further questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, roll call?
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Council Lazo?
Who's that? Go ahead.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Markey?
No.
And Council Ryan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 17, vote to approve a transfer request from account number 001210.518100, witness fees, to account number 001210.527100, gearing uniforms, in the amount of $8,000, to cover the increase in the cost of academy uniforms for police recruits to attend the entry-level training at the police academy. Second. Council Lazo?
It was voted unanimously in favor of this agenda item.
Thank you. Chief Whitson, you have anything to add?
If I could quickly on this one, through you, Mr. Chair. This is one on FY19, and again, on FY21, I requested increases during the budget process and FY22. I will be asking it again, and I explained this in great length at the subcommittee, but I look forward to explaining it again during the budget process.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions, comments? Council Markey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Okay, this time I will ask a question. Are academy uniforms always this expensive, $8,000?
Chief Whitson?
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, yes, just entry-level recruits for one candidate is usually about $3,000, so we've got several that are going to be going through. And I can't predict when people are going to leave. There's a state police academy class coming up in a couple of months, and some people leaving for that. So I just, again, I'm trying not to steal the town manager's language from a few meetings ago, I'm just forecasting the need to the department, and unfortunately, it is very expensive to go to a police academy. Just the equipment alone.
But, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But it says uniforms, academy uniforms. That includes all? Okay.
Good, Chief.
I apologize, Council Markey, you have gear, all gear, police uniforms, that's any kind of equipment that they need, that's duty belts, holsters, boots, things like that. And it is about $3,000, give or take, per recruit.
All right. Thank you.
Chief Whitson, a question for you, just through my training and experience. The academy requires a certain number of equipment and gives them the whole gear list that is allocated per recruit, is that correct?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, I neglected to mention that. We get a list from one of the various academies in the state, and we have no options. We have to follow exactly what they instruct us to get. We send our recruits to a private business, they get all of their equipment, and we get the bill.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call?
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Markey?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
And Council Steve?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 18, vote to approve a transfer request from account number 001210.518100, witness fees, to account number 001210.550300, safety supplies, in the amount of $2,000, to cover the cost of the increase in ammunition due to the ongoing global pandemic, COVID-19. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Council Lazo?
It was voted unanimously in favor, that's our committee.
Thank you. Questions? Council Ryan?
Yes, for me, through you, Mr. Chair, to the chief. How much has the unit cost gone up for ammunition?
Right, if I could, through you, Mr. Chair, right now, I'm being told, of course, these are just projections, that ammunition is going up by about 50% on July 1st, for various reasons of what's going on in the country, especially with the pandemic, there's a shortage, a shortage, cannot get ammunition anywhere, and we're being told, at least by our vendors, you better get it now for the rest of the year, because we have to qualify twice a year. And so I'm thinking by about 50%. So it's never been this expensive, I've never seen it this expensive, but it's all supply and demand, there's not a lot available, so as soon as it's coming up, people are buying it all up. So we're just trying to get ahead of it now. We've got enough for our spring qualifications, I'm trying to get ahead of it for our fall qualifications.
If I can continue, Mr. Chair, through you, you told me the percentage, but what's the, do you know the number increase, the price increase, not just the percentage increase?
Well, I can, certainly, through you, Mr. Chair, the rounds of ammunition that say were like, you know, 40 or 50 cents per round, and now almost a dollar, which, again, it's insane, I've never seen it like this. So we go from, to give you that number, approximately about $10,000 a year for ammunition, and I've got some money in our state supply account left over from not spending it throughout the year. We usually buy ammunition with it right around now, usually we can do that, but because it went from, again, about 10,000, it's, used to be four or five, so it's almost double. To give you an exact number, we spent about 10,000 every year ammunition.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just to Council Ryan's question, it's a very good question, because, you know, just the other day, going to Cabela's or Walmart, you can't find anything besides very cheap ammunition on the shelf, and I mean cheap, it's cheap guns that we'd be buying for cheap ammo. So it is going over a dollar just for one round, that's crazy. And according to experts, it won't probably curtail until the fall time, and that's just probably retail. We don't even know what it's going to be like for the military, or the police officers, or anything like that, so it's crazy right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. You think we should double the amount, chief, in case next year we need more, we can save some money now?
And if I could, through you, Mr. Chair, come the budget season, we'll be looking at issues with this Council Dow, and I appreciate that. Just to kind of circle back to Council Ryan, to break it down even more specifically, you have to qualify twice a year as a police officer, and you have to qualify twice, 50 rounds per qual. So it's 100 rounds per police officer, twice a year, times 38 police officers. So we go through a lot of ammunition, and that's if everybody passes the first time through. So it can get quite expensive.
Thank you. Council Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, actually made me think of another question. This is a really good discussion, I feel. Maybe either the chief or Mr. Chair, because of your experience, can answer this. You say you give about 100 rounds of ammunition per to an officer every half-year, correct?
And if I could, that's 45 caliber ammunition, that's not counting the patrol rifle, which is 223 ammunition. So there's two different weapon systems that we use. So for our purposes tonight, I'm talking about our 45 caliber weapon that we carry on our duty belt. So 100 rounds, and then 100 rounds if they go through the first time, and then another 100 rounds in the fall if they pass the first time through.
Now, for those who...
100 rounds, give or take.
If I may continue, Mr. Chair, for those who may not know, is there, like, an expiration on the ammunition, which is why you have to get new ammunition every year, or is it just the use of the ammunition? Every six months is roughly about 100?
Well, yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, we also, that's just qualifications, Council Ryan, we probably spend, and I can't give you the exact amount of rounds, but there's all kinds of scenarios that were put through, shoot, don't shoot scenarios, it's not just qualifications. We go down there, and we could possibly go through, you know, thousands of rounds of ammunition in one, one, one training session that lasts about, you know, two weeks by the time we do the whole department and our auxiliaries. So it's not just the number figure, I didn't say that to confuse anyone, that's just strictly the qualifying rounds. The chairman would know that there's much more to fire round instruction than just qualifications. There's a lot of other hands-on training we have to do.
And Chief, just if I could elaborate, also, you have three, well, two recruits in the academy right now, correct?
Yes.
And what is the minimum requirement that they're supposed to bring, isn't it like 10,000 rounds?
Exactly, I think it's somewhere around 8,000 rounds, Mr. Chairman, per recruit that you need. They won't be at that point for a little while, but yes, that's what they'll eventually need.
Right, for every recruit, that's a requirement mandated, that they take that ammunition to the academy? So that's in addition to your regular qualifications, because they put them through a lot. And just to add to the chief's personal experience, sometimes an officer, like me, might have a bad day on a range, and not make it through that qualification that day, and have to do a reshoot to get through, because there's 100% accountability, you miss the paper once, just astray somehow, you're shooting that round again. So it's not just 100 rounds, so it could be 150, 200, so, yeah, it's expensive, so, yeah, and it's a challenge for everybody.
Thank you for all the information, this has been very helpful, by the way. Thank you.
And things are going to add up, too, because who knows what the Police Reform Act will bring in, a lot more cost to police agencies as well. So there may be even more requirements on use of force and defensive tactics and all that going forward. Council Steves?
I mean, I just wanted, while you were talking about this, I was looking up something online here about the fact it's also, you've got to remember that, that police people are looking for guns and ammunition in competition with the fact that gun sales surged 80% in January publicly, and Americans have bought more than 17 million guns in the last year and a half.
It's been a crazy year. Really has.
And a lot of them, a lot, I kind of wonder, who's buying all of them? I mean, you've heard a lot about militia activity and stuff like that out there, it's all being made, and they're all going somewhere.
Council Lazo?
Chairman, through you, to the chief, chief, the question was asked, is there a life expectancy on ammunition? I don't know if I missed the answer.
No, we usually, we don't worry about it, we go through all of our ammunition, and we get low, we use everything. There's no real, we just, we use it all before we get to that.
Right, but to, Mr. Council Dow mentioned, we're kind of in business, and when we hear the copper's going up, we buy copper ahead of time. And I know some of the electricians, new metals were going up, so they put $10,000 in copper wire. When we know, in my business, that the metal ties are going up, we put a lot of money into them to weather this price hike, and then after it levels off. So if there isn't a life expectancy, in other words, if you bulk buy something, say we buy a little more than we need, as long as it doesn't expire, it's good business. Instead of letting money sit in an account free cash, and we tie a little more up, we can work on that during budget session.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, yes, we'll be working on that. This will get us easily through the year, and I, and again, from everybody I talk to, I can't, I can't project what the costs are going to be, but it will not stay high, you know, for years and years to come. So we've got enough to get through the year, and then even in July, when we visit the safety supply account for next year, I'll be budgeting for the ammunition. So we're good now, I feel very comfortable all 2021, even getting into summer 2022, and I think we'll be okay with the pricing. I mean, this can't last forever, and I say that, knock on wood, but I feel comfortable with what we're doing here tonight, if this is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief.
Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is due to the COVID-19, so you are going to put in for reimbursement for this through the COVID-19 relief bill, correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair, again, we will try to get as much as we can back. I tried with a, I spoke with the finance director about some other purchases through COVID, tried relating them to that, because some other departments who approved for it, we were denied. So I will certainly try this, Council Marquetti.
Thank you.
Karen, do you want to answer that question? Do you have an answer for that?
I think I can answer it, but I don't want to.
I would say that that would not be a known respect.
Right. Chief, if you could, just to the wording of this agenda item, the comment of due to the COVID pandemic was in relationship to the price increase due to the COVID-19, not specific to sanitizing and things like that, correct?
As much as I hate that, you're correct, it's due to the, I'm trying to cut off the price increase and save money on the backside is what I'm trying to do. So I don't know if this will be approved, but it doesn't hurt asking, I don't think it's going to be.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
And Council Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 19, vote to approve a transfer request in account number 001210.51100, salary to account number 001210.511700, part-time salary in the amount of $25,000 to cover the cost to increase the hours of our part-time custodian to continue to sanitize the police headquarters due to the ongoing global pandemic, COVID-19.
So moved.
Second. Chief, questions? I guess I have a question for Karen. Karen, given the fact that we would increase hours to the custodian to continue to sanitize this station, that would be a potential reimbursable expense because it's to sanitize due to COVID-19. Incorrect or correct?
That would be true, but I don't believe that the bulk of the $25,000 is for an increase in the salary, because that would be too much, so I might ask the chief to elaborate on that.
Chief, was that increase in salary or just hours, correct? For the part-time?
I could not hear, Mr. Sinlars, but I will say that this entire $25,000 would not be 100% reimbursed through COVID, because it's not all directly, most of it's related to that, but some of this is just dispatch, and part of our communication center with operations, and we're having a hard time keeping people to dispatch police and fire. I've got some other, it's coming up on the agenda, actually, ideas in place on how to alleviate some of this. So it's just, this was a crazy year, some of it's due to the part-time custodian increase in hours, some of it's just because we need per diem dispatches in here to cover shifts that we can't fill with full-time people.
So the question, I believe, the question is, you have $25,000 to part-time salary, correct?
Yep.
Is that not to increase his salary, but to increase number of hours? That was the question.
If I could, Mr. Chair, this is to cover the cost for the rest of the fiscal year to June 30th, to increase hours for the custodian, I don't know if I misunderstood you, yes, we have increased Mr. Kupick's part-time hours, we did that a long time ago, and that's why a lot of his part-time salary account was drained, because he's working some serious hours for us to sanitize the building. This also is part-time salary for per diem dispatch, so I don't want to confuse the two. We've increased the custodian's hours, and we've also covered part-time dispatch hours. But again, this is another one of those accounts where every single year I come before council, and I ask for increases to cover part-time salary, and it's denied, and I'm told do a transfer, so I'll be back again to FY22, and this, this actual part-time salary account, where I'm requesting almost double what we usually get funded, so I don't have to come back and ask the transfers to this account. So again, to come back to your original question, yes, some of our custodians' hours, they've been increased for several months now, due to the pandemic, and that I'll be seeking reimbursement for.
So there was two transfer requests in here, one, $25,000 for the part-time custodian, and then $20,000 for dispatch, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, is that for me?
Yes.
Yeah, the second, the next item on the agenda, number 20, that was, that's COVID-related, all of that is COVID sick related, and I'll be requesting reimbursements for that.
All right. Karen?
I don't want to confuse the two.
Yeah, no, I don't either, we kind of, Karen?
Yes, thank you. Chief, if I could, I just wanted to ask, of that $25,000, how much do you estimate would be for the custodian versus how much for the dispatchers? I think that breakdown would help.
I would estimate, as far as the custodian, it's probably about $5,000.
Yep, so that's, so the 5,000 of that 25,000 would be for the custodian, which we would seek reimbursement, but the rest of it would be, the 20,000 would be to cover the dispatchers.
Okay, so that's where I'm confused, because this, you have one item that's 25,000, and then the following one is 20,000.
The, the next item is totally separate.
All right, so this part-time salary?
So right here, yeah, within the 25,500, custodian, 20,000, dispatch makes up just this 25,000 transfer. The next one would be for a different purpose.
Okay, so that's where I'm confused, because the agenda item itself just says to increase the hours of the part-time custodian to sanitize the police headquarters, $25,000. That's just for the custodian?
No, that's where, that's where it's misleading, we kind of needed to add a little bit more of the description, I believe, to the agenda item.
Okay, as well as?
Yes, as well as.
Okay, that's where we were confused, chief, okay?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I was under the assumption that you had the document in front of you, and maybe you do not, the transfer request form, it's all, it's articulated in that form exactly what this is for. I, maybe you're correct, needs to be added language.
It's just the way the agenda item was written, so, yes, your transfer request articulates quite all the information, it's just, and that's why it was a little confusing about the, all right, so we need to add into this to cover the cost increase in hours of part-time custodian, as well as to cover additional staff for dispatchers. Is that correct, Karen?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Can I entertain that in a form of?
So moved.
Second. Is that okay for a friendly amendment, or to make it clarification, or do you want a full?
Good.
Are you good with that? All right. All right, thank you, chief, sorry for the confusion. Any further discussion on that? Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just for a clarification, the full explanation here says the majority of this increase is due to our current public health crisis, correct? So it is. So wouldn't it be covered by COVID?
I hope so.
That's what it looks, that's what it reads to me.
Mr. Town Manager? Potentially, a majority of it could, as well as some additional, correct? I don't know, sure.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think I would defer to Ms. Harnoy's guidance, I mean, one of the things that I am looking at and tracking underneath the new American Relief Plan Act, there is money set aside for Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Fund, and that says the response to the public health emergency. It's very vague, and at this point in time, we don't know, I mean, I, my gut tells me we'll be able to get money for it, I just don't know the breakdown at this point in time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
And Council Catrona?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 20, vote to approve a transfer from account number 001210.51100, salary to account number 001210.515100, sick, in the amount of $20,000 to cover the increased cost for coverage when officers and civilian dispatches have used sick leave as a result of the testing positive for COVID-19.
So moved.
Second. Council Lazo?
This was voted unanimously in favor, it's subcommittee.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Chief Whitson?
Through you, Mr. Chair, this one's much clearer, this entire amount, I will be requesting reimbursement. This is for police officers and civilian dispatches who use sick leave because they tested positive for COVID, including me, and/or had contact with people in the community who had COVID, and we have to put them out on quarantine. There is no other issue here other than the ongoing global pandemic, that's why this number is so high. We've had to pay about 531 hours and some change on this because of COVID, and time missed, and that's a substantial amount of money. So this I'll be requesting, we're tracking, and I'm working with Mrs. Harnoy, so I'm getting a lot, most of this, all of this, money recovered as a result of COVID.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Roll call.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Katrona.
Yes.
And Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 20, vote to approve a transfer from account number 001132-578100 Town Council Reserve Fund to account number 01900000-521200 heating fuel and the amount of $3,000 due to a shortage in the heating account because of an extra oil delivery at DPW and to cover the price increase from $2.0675 to $2.1547 per gallon. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And this went through your subcommittee, Counsel Steve?
Yeah, we, we recommended unanimously, just to clarify that this is actually, it's not, it's not so much an exact, actually a delivery thing as it's just the price has gone up, although it does say an extra delivery on the, on the receipt, on the transfer request. But as I recall, Heather mentioned that there, that that was the real underlying issue is that they just needed more oil.
Any questions? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have a question for Heather. Is the, the oil increase because you have any old window down there or the heat is running out of the window is old or something? Why is increasing?
Thank you. Heather, did you hear the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
So probably we use about 16,000 gallons a year. This year, I think we are averaging right about the same amount from year to year. We have been able to go back. Last year, we were fortunate that we had oil from a few prior years back when we had some excess money. We bought extra oil and put it in a separate storage tank and we just transferred it over. So last year, it looked like we had a lot of excess money in that account and the price was actually a little better last year. And then this year, we didn't have that excess oil in that other tank. So we actually ended up purchasing, I don't remember the exact amount, but we're a little bit over on our purchase. It's really not our windows per se or anything there. We're averaging right about the same amount every year over the last two years, which is what I had reference on.
Thank you. What's that? Anybody else? Roll call.
Counsel Jovan.
Yes.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Katrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
And Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 22, vote to approve a transfer from account number 001132-578100 Town Council Reserve Fund and the amount of $10,126 and transfer from account number 001945-56500 Bay Path Assessment and the amount of $15,834 to account number 001297-521000 Public Safety Streetlights Electricity for a total amount of $26,000 due to an increase in streetlight costs at approximately 17% over last year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I went through our subcommittee and it was passed unanimously.
Thank you. Questions? Counsel Katrona first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just to repeat what I stated during the subcommittee, I think, again, it was mentioned during subcommittee by the DPW director that we potentially saw the increase throughout the year coming and it's only at this point that we're now asking for a sit-down and a meeting with the utilities. So I think we need to be more proactive, not reactive, to have closer oversight throughout the year. And I think that's something the town manager should be looking closer at, especially with all the department heads, is just a little better oversight when it comes time to our money. Thank you.
Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. The light, who's checking the light at night to see if it's working or not? We have two light here on Russell Hill in front of the town hall doesn't work. Increasing the light budget and I drive around, I should, you know, I write them down. I don't have it paper on me. Almost 16 light doesn't work on, I just drive around for half hour. I'm wondering who supposed to be checking if the light working or not? Who jobs that? You know, we increase the budget and we pay for light doesn't work. Thank you.
Ms. Blake, any question?
So any, yep, I can answer that. Any resident can call in an out-of-service light. The decorative lights downtown are a responsibility of the town and we maintain them. My staff does periodically check to make sure they're working, but any of the lights that are out across town can be called into National Grid. On the back of your light bill, there is a number to call and report them out and then they will bring them back into service. I don't have staff enough to drive around and write down pole numbers every night of what ID lights that are out. So any resident can call in and report the lights out to National Grid. If their lights, if they don't get response within a couple of weeks, I'm happy to use the contact that we have at National Grid to report it to. But I would prefer if people just call them in directly to National Grid, the light, the pole numbers are right on their, on the poles and they can use their address if it's near an address also.
Thank you. Counsel Marquetti.
If I can follow up on what Counsel Katrona said, through you to Heather, have you had a chance yet to talk to National Grid since we did talk about that at the last, at the G G meeting?
We did receive, both Karen and I, who requested the meeting, have received an email back to them, from them saying that they're aware of it and they're still working on it, but they have not provided us any feedback at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just, I just have a question here. I see that most of this is streetlights, National Grid, and there's some that's called Land of the Sky, Scalpwood Road Solar Production, Spring Hills Solar, they're all solar production. And I was just like a clarification of what exactly does that mean?
Sure. Yep, I can give you that. I believe I can and Karen can help me if I screw it up. So we, as you're aware, we get solar credits. With the solar credits, we have to purchase basically power and Land of the Sky is the company that we purchase the power from. So Land of the Sky sends us an invoice for their different solar arrays and we pay them a set rate for that and they provide us back a solar credit that goes back through National Grid and we get a higher rate on that credit. So it's, and I don't have the numbers in front of, you know, exactly. It's not really under me to, to monitor that, but I think it's something like we pay them nine cents a kilowatt hour and then we get a credit at like 12 or 13 cents a kilowatt hour. That was an agreement that was done four or five years ago, which complicates our invoices dramatically to be able to see if they're going up or down, which is what I said in the meeting, actually in the meeting. So we don't actually see a big increase in our light bills until it's, until we're basically running out of money.
All right. Karen?
Mr. Chair, if I could too, I also wanted to point out that it was talked about in subcommittee. This transfer is going to be, this projected for the months of March and April. So we will be probably having to come back again to get a transfer for the costs for May and June. And as Heather just commented too, we keep an eye on, especially on this budget, pretty closely every month, we keep watching it. And like she said, it is hard to kind of monitor it because we have the timing of the credits. National Grid has to do all of that manually. So some months we have more credits, some months we have less credits. And then sometimes it's more expensive to purchase electricity, especially in the spring and then into the summer because it's generating more. So it's higher in that. So I'm not trying to make excuses or anything for it, but I'm just trying to explain, you know, that it's, there's kind of a lot of different variables in it that we have to look at in order to determine where we're at at a certain part of the fiscal year.
Counsel Ryan?
Oh, no, I don't have any.
Oh, okay. Just one question to Heather, only because you mentioned decorative lights and before I forget, the two decorative lights in front of Dunkin' Donuts that have never worked with the reconstruction project, are they going to work?
No.
Then why do we keep them there?
It wasn't part of the design to connect them. They were designed to be connected into Dunkin' Donuts is my understanding and that's where the conduits run. There is literally no conduits that connect them. I think in the future, there might be an opportunity to potentially power those with small solar panels, but it would cost, they would need retrofits to do that. There physically isn't conduit to connect them.
All right. Thank you. Question was asked and before I forget, I had that note. So while you were here and somebody mentioned decorative lights, it triggered that, remember.
Mr. Chair, why wouldn't do something to, now they're working on the road, diggings and all that, why we don't take over and make them work? That's the best time. Either get ready for them for the future if we have to, or we need to make them work. Now is the best time to run what we need to run for them and get them prepared for future reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
I, I don't think there's conduits to, to connect them. I think, I'm not even sure if the ones up on, near Marcy Street are really even powered by us. It might be powered by Rite Aid. So, or former Rite Aid. So there's no conduits that go from Marcy Street towards Dunkin' Donuts and there's no conduits that go from Cumberland Farms, the ones that Cumberland Farms were put in it by Cumberland Farms. And so there's a disconnect in the power source there. That's why I'm suggesting that we look at potentially doing solar. To go back and retrofit and have the design run and find where the power's coming, yes, it could be done, but it would be very expensive at this point because it would be a complete change order. We don't have that kind of power conduit and everything to, to run for two lights. Please, all of it is. I think it'd be much more cost-effective to look at the solar option, which there are, those small solar panels are coming along ways. So I think we could probably do it much more effectively by doing solar.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Heather, those are, are they town-owned lights or are they owned by the buildings, the businesses that are there?
I, I can't even tell you that. I believe they're town-owned lights. They're on town property. I believe they were installed when the other project went through, but I don't have any of that documentation that was long before I was here. And I've actually looked for the information for those projects. I'm not sure if they maybe exist in the, in the economic development when they did the project, but DPW doesn't have the records.
So if we can, either for the manager or for Heather or for whoever, just if we can try to find out other information, whether or not they're even our own lights, that would be, that would be helpful.
They are on our property. What I was told in the past is they were designed to be, to be serviced from Dunkin' Donuts and Dunkin' Donuts declined allowing them to be connected to their service.
Okay. So if they're, if they are our lights and they're doing nothing, that's an issue in my mind. Yeah. So, right? Like if there are lights and they're not retrofitted correctly, they don't have the right conduits, why, why do we even put them there?
Yeah. So I just wanted to ask a question. I, I think this is probably needs more, more conversation at a DPW meeting because we're getting off topic, but I'll just defer to a question from Counsel Lazo and then Counsel Dow.
Let's light the light, get a price to light it. We're, this, this council's in the business of solving problems. We vote millions of dollars. We have a wonderful town manager gets things done. Get it done. Whatever it takes, go to DPW, run a piece of conduit to power down the street. If we got to run 1,000 feet of line, let's run 1,000 feet of line or take the light out completely and we won't have to worry about the problem any longer. But something has to be done.
The project's there right now, but it's going now. So that would be the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I was gonna just recommend Mr. Town Counsel Marquetti to put it on the meeting tomorrow if we can. I don't know if it's too late to see if we can talk about solars, if that's the cheapest way to go. And after Main Street is all done, it's going to be looking beautiful Main Street and half the light doesn't work. I mean, and we sit aggro, is Dunkin' Donut, is light or the town? I think we should put it on, on the meeting tomorrow if we can and we discussed it as a solar panel, not conduit. I think this is the best way to go right now. Thank you.
Counsel Adams, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I agree with Counsel Lazo, let's get it done. But I have a funny feeling. I heard them speaking at the planning board about the beautiful decorative lights that they required Walgreens to put up years ago. And so I was just wondering if that's part of the project. So I'm sure that may be something to look at as well. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Okay. Any further question on this agenda item itself? Say none. Roll call.
Counsel Lazo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Counsel Adams.
Yes.
Counsel Katrona.
Yes.
Counsel Daniel.
Yes.
Counsel Dow.
Yes.
And Counsel Jovan.
Yes. Going to take a 10-minute recess just to stretch. It's 9:30. So take 10 minutes and we'll come back.
Okay.
001123.57300 dues and subscriptions and the amount of $270 to reimburse the town manager's membership to the ICMA.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, this went through Counsel Steves?
Yeah, we recommended it unanimously. It's part of, it's part of the manager's contract.
It's part of his contract, correct? Yep. Questions, comments? Discussion. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I don't know if I can ask the town manager, did any response back? I don't know if he was able to talk to him. They're going to guarantee to sign 10 years contract with us?
Oh, no, this is something else. This is, this is repair and maintenance of motor vehicles.
Yeah.
Not the RMV.
Oh, the cars. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, the original, the original.
The original agenda was wrong.
Okay, okay.
Repair and maintenance of vehicles. So.
I thought we were talking about the ICMA.
We are.
Yeah, yeah. But the original budget, the original item that went to general government had RMV, not R and M. So that's why you asked the question.
Yeah, the second, the second agenda that got sent around was the correct one.
Correct. Any, any further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Ryan.
Yes.
Hold on, hold on, hold on one second.
Yes.
Karen, did you want to say something?
Yes, I could. I'm sorry. I just noticed that it should be $270.90.
Oh, okay. You would have been short and you would have come back for that 90 cents. Is that okay in an amendment for 90 cents?
I'll pay it. I'll give her the 90 cents.
You'll give her the 90 cents. All right. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay. Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
And Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Thank you, Karen. You did have it appropriately noted on your transfer document, however. So thank you. I just didn't pick it up when it got transposed. Thank you. Item 24, vote to approve the hiring of a ninth full-time civilian dispatcher to fill the need. Required to have two civilian dispatches assigned to most shifts. This position will be funded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security State 911 Department Grant.
So moved.
Second. This went through you, Counsel Steves?
No, no, that one didn't. But I did have a question.
Did this come through you?
Ah, that, that.
I don't know. Did we go to subcommittee on this, Chief?
We went to subcommittee.
I don't think we did.
Yeah, we did.
We did?
I think it was.
It was unanimous. It was unanimous. It was on the agenda. I just didn't know.
Yep. Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I had a quick question through you to the chief. I just want to clarify. So if this is a grant position, how is it going to be funded going forward?
Mr. Chair, I can explain this relatively quickly. This did go to PPP. I explained it in great length during that subcommittee. I went over the entire history. So Counsel Steves, just, I guess if I can, through you, Mr. Chair, explain a little bit of this now?
That's good.
And I'll, and I'll absolutely answer Counsel Steves' question as it's a little pre, is before I could speak about it. So this will answer the question. The implementation of the Chapter 223 Acts of 2008 created the State 911 Department. What happened is that in '08 required all dispatches to receive a much, much more training than they were receiving prior to that. We always had police officers on the desk. That law in '08 changed everything. It wasn't practical to have police officers inside and we slowly began to transition to civilian dispatches. As part of that funding mechanism for the State 911 Department that was created as a result of these acts of '08, there was a $1 surcharge put on every single cell phone and landline in the Commonwealth. If you had access to dial 911 or the ability, I should say, to dial 911, you were charged a $1 fee. And in fact, back in January of 2019, the State 911 Department actually raised that now to $1.50. So if you look at any phone bill that can call 911 in Massachusetts, I don't know how many there are, they're paying a $1.50 service fee. So that's how that's funded, Counsel Steves. Needless to say, Southbridge received substantial money. We applied for a grant every year through the State 911 Department. Back in '09, when I was a lieutenant, we used to get somewhere around $22,000 a year. They base it on your call volume. In Southbridge, for some reason, our call volume never seems to drop. It always increases. So every year, we get more and more funding. That can be a good and a bad thing, but like, for example, in fiscal year 15, we got about $45,000. In '18, we got about $45,000. In '20, we got almost $70,000. In '21, I'm sorry, in '20, we got almost $60,000. In '21, we got almost $70,000. And now fiscal year '22, it starts on July 1, we're slated to receive another, to be exact, $69,699. And we get that every single year and it's all funded through the 911 Department, which is all funded through 911 surcharges. The money's not going anywhere. Historically, this department has always supplanted that money. It's permissible under law. We would cover police officer salaries to fill dispatcher positions on the desk because we were never adequately funded. With this council, with the previous council, now we're budgeting 38 police officers and we're going to start using this money for its originally intended purpose. We're going to actually fund dispatch positions. originally intended purpose. We're gonna actually fund dispatcher positions since July, as all of you know, of 2020, starting during the pandemic. We merged the fire department, our communication center, now dispatchers both. I've spoken with the fire chief and he's on the call, so I'm certainly not speaking for him. We went from about 35,000 police-related calls with one or two dispatches to now a little over 45,000 police and fire-related calls. And it's essential to have two dispatches on the desk for the majority of the time. I'd like it to be 24/7. A department with our size, our scope of services, nine to, nine to 11 full-time dispatches, somewhere in that range. We're asking for nine right now. This will firm up our dispatch coverage. It'll also eliminate me coming back to ask for more funding, hopefully in the part-time salary account. As long as we can keep nine full-time dispatches working here, this is approved. Of course, there's issues. There's medical issues. People leave. People, people come, they go. I can't control that. But we're gonna certainly make, take a concerted effort here to keep nine full-time dispatches and not to belabor this meeting. But I also mentioned in the subcommittee, we're speaking with a neighboring community that shall remain nameless about the possibility of going regional. And then that will be a whole nother conversation, you know, without belaboring this meeting. But as we sit here tonight, the only cost would be if the employee took health benefits. I don't know who the employee's gonna be. I don't know if they'll take a spouses or if they're a single family. I, I don't know any of that yet, obviously, because we don't have an employee. So it could potentially not cost the town. I think it could potentially cost the healthcare and those type of benefits, which I believe come out to about $15,000 per employee. But to get a full-time employee, minimal cost, possibly no cost, I think it's a win-win for the town and we should, I highly recommend that we move forward on this.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Council Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just for clarification, we have, you need nine of them. You have three shifts and you have two working per shift, but you, you need nine? Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I believe I mentioned it during, during the subcommittee. Yeah, I didn't. I'm old. The shifts work four and two, and it's kind of hard to explain it or understand if you don't work in our field. But it's four days on, two days off. You're gonna cover days off. You have to cover vacation time. You have to cover sick time. We've got shifts that are busier than others. Our 3 to 11 shift, you absolutely have to have two dispatches on. We also staff with swing shifts, 7 P to 3 A, especially in the summer months, because things can get pretty chaotic. So it's not as easy as, okay, you need seven days a week coverage, two dispatches every shift. It's a four-on-two-off schedule, which essentially gives them, and the police officers also, a four-on-two-off schedule gives you about 17 more days off a year than if you worked the five and two. And that's the standard in the industry, similar to the fire department days, with however many days they rotate a month. It's a standard in our profession. So that creates some gaps in coverage where when dispatches are on days off, we gotta fill them with another full-time employee. And it kind of switches, it flips, when that dispatcher's on a day off. Then when they come back to work, the other two take days off. And it's a, it's a lot of planning. And nine fills a lot of those gaps, but it still doesn't get, because you gotta remember, we have a lead dispatcher now that's a working supervisor. And it's a lot for her to step in and also do all the required training, the in-service training they have to take every year. It's becoming quite a, it's a big lift for, for our lead dispatcher to also cover shifts. Both places, in neighboring communities, if you checked, some smaller than us, some larger, they have a lead that doesn't work shifts. They oversee the communication center and all they do is scheduling and time off and things like that. Our lead dispatcher, to her credit, does a lot more than that. She'll fill in gaps. She'll fill in sick days. She'll fill in on vacation time and things like that. So even with this, even if nine is approved, we'll still go, I believe there's a few nights a week from like 3:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the morning. And the fire chief and I talked extensively about this. They still only one dispatcher on some nights of the week, just because of the way that that four-on-two rotation falls. So I don't know if I confused you with that or confused anybody. But it's just that four-on-two-off schedule that's a little tricky. It's not as easy as just plugging someone in Monday to Friday coverage, day shift, two dispatches every shift. It's much more complex than that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
I was just gonna say, this simple rule of thumb that I've always used in other communities, if you're running a 24-hour shift, if you have one person doing the job, you have to have four people on the payroll to cover that one job. If it's a 24-hour, to the chief's point, it's the easier math. And so if you have two people, you need a minimum of eight, and then you would need an additional ninth or, you know, more to cover holiday, sick time, and any of the others. So that's, that's the math. It's the easy math is one equals four on a 24-hour job.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Chief. Roll call.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 25, vote to ratify the goods and services agreement with BSC Group to provide urban planning consultant services for $45,000, funded using the Urban Agenda Grant Award. Authorize the town manager to sign the agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Council Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next three agenda items unanimous of all present at the EPND.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything or do you want to defer to Peg?
I'll defer to Ms. Dean. I see her on, on the screen now, so.
Good evening, Peg. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. Welcome back to the dais. And so we have on the call the consultant Jeff Fasser from BSC Group. I also supplemented the subcommittee comments by following up with references that were unsolicited by, through BSC. I just did a Google search, found some recent work, contacted the municipalities specifically, because I'd already gotten references at the state level. So this was great to find out from specific towns, how they helped to transform them. And nothing but high marks for them. Jeff specifically has worked for the town. I was asked when our urban renewal plan was written at the subcommittee meeting, and I misspoke. So our plan, public participation plan happened back in 2003, 2004, as it was coupled with another planning exercise. And the actual plan was adopted in 2011. It's slated to be a 20-year plan. So here we are in the halfway point. This is a perfect time for us to reevaluate and hit the ground running with some recommendations.
Thank you. Did you want BSC to say anything or you, did you want them to comment or is there any questions from councilors?
Through, through you.
Go ahead.
Through, if I may. Yeah. So I invited Jeff on, should you have any questions. Jeff, I guess I'd leave it to you if you'd like to say a few comments, if the chair is open to it. We're all very tired. It's late, I know.
Jeff, welcome.
Thank you. Don't have much more to say than what Peg said. Just looking forward to a favorable vote so we can start working with Peg and the rest of the community to help continue to transform downtown. There's a lot of opportunities and a lot of untapped potential. So looking forward to trying to identify the priorities and funding sources to see the momentum that's been started to continue.
Oh.
Here we go. Okay, any questions, comments? Peg, go ahead.
One last comment asked at the meeting was how committed the redevelopment authority is to this initiative. They approved at their last redevelopment authority meeting to meet every Thursday from now until the end of this particular grant, which is going to be a three-month window, starting this Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Seen none? Roll call.
Council Steves?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
And Council Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item 26, vote to ratify the non-binary and community agreement with BSC Group for local rapid recovery program, LRRP, technical assistance, and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Peg? Anything on this one?
Sure, just quickly. So if you'll remember, this one was assigned to us by the state as part of the LRRP, the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Assistance, Technical Assistance. No money changes hands. They asked that we sign the agreement once they had matched us with our consultant. They chose BSC because they had done the urban renewal plan and because they recommended that we dovetail this with our urban agenda. The state did a great job of collaborating with DHCD, who's doing the LRRP, and the EOHED, who's handling the urban agenda, to see, help us see through our goals.
Great. Questions? Council Adams, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank Peg for all the hard work she's doing on this. We did take a walk around, myself, Council Marquetti and his wife, a few others, Jeff included, with Ms. Dean, just kind of took a look around the downtown area so they can get some questions answered from us while we moved around. And appreciate, I look forward to seeing what they come up with at the end, the redevelopment authority. Thank you, Peg, for, for getting them set up and locked on for every Thursday. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? No? I look forward to working with Jeff and the team and hearing what comes out of this so that we can continue the improvements in that area and then the improvements in the town. And like I keep hearing out in the public, there's a lot of good things happening and people are excited about the changes they see and what's going on. And to continue moving forward, so I look forward to working with you and the redevelopment on that. Council Adams?
Sorry about that. I want to also add Eric as well. He walked around with us the other day as well.
Eric, yeah. Any other questions, comments? Seen none? Roll call.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
And Council Steves?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 27, vote to approve the submission of the One Stop for Growth Expression of Interest outlined in Town's five economic development priorities and authorize the town manager to approve and sign all related paperwork. So moved. So again, comments, questions? Peg, you have more information on this?
I, I hope that you received the memo and the pre-application. I don't expect that you poured over it in too detailed a fashion. It's just a high-level expression of interest of our five top priorities. Before submitting it, I wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. This has already been vetted through the department heads and the town manager, and we'd love to be able to get it in before the deadline of April 2, which will then allow the town to give us feedback in advance of applying for one of the specific, or a couple of the specific grants that fall within this new platform of 10 grants that the state is trying to help us manage better. It's a, you know, it was a benefit to the towns for them to consolidate these.
Comments? Questions? No? Well, Peg, thank you for all the hard work that you and the group has been doing on all these grants. So a lot of work on the table and I look forward to working with you all on it. Seen no other comments? Roll call.
Council Katrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Council Marquetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Steves?
Yes.
And Council Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 28, vote to approve the USDA Rural Development Programs Community Facilities Disaster Funds, NOFA 2019, 19552, providing 35% of capital purchases made prior to June 2021 to eligible communities per USDA requirements with a USDA secured amount of $115,847.81 of grant funds for our community. Consider approving the town apply for the grant to fund proposed capital purchases as described in the attached document and authorize the town manager to sign all paperwork related to the application. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? So moved. There's a second.
Second.
And this went through Council Steves?
Yeah, it went through our subcommittee. We ended up sending it up without a recommendation. It was very heavily debated. Some of us are, and I'm, and I'm still kind of on the fence on this one. A lot of discussion about the need for these kinds of items. I think we all recognize the need. But there was a lot of concern about the fact that we still haven't vetted the capital budget yet. This is a little bit, I think that some of us thought it was a little early because of the way the capital budget cycle is. But we also understand that the way the grant is set up, it's designed to throw this kind of, to bring it forward from the capital cycle because of the way the deadlines are in this grant. And some of us had some concerns about the fact that we haven't vetted the grant, haven't vetted the capital issues yet and weren't, weren't sure about, about supporting this particular grant.
Thank you. Council Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just, I'd like to talk about this for a little bit. I'm not in favor of this and I will not be supporting it this evening, but I'd like to explain why. And after I read through some of the documents that were also supplied to us that have more questions, I can't justify spending $215,000 on the town side when we haven't gone through capital as of yet. We may say yes, we may say no to some of these. Now, we heard from the fire chief that this was a 1971, it's a 1982 vehicle, just for an example. We have plow trucks that we sub out for the town that get more use. I understand that and that they're, they're very well maintained. Now, going through capital, we may say yes to one cruiser. We may say no to everything. We don't know at this point until we vet this out through capital. Now, as I read through this, we are a rural community of 20,000 or less. So I guess my first question that I have is, could this grant have been utilized for the airport? And I ask that of Peg.
So first off, I apologize. Oh, go ahead. Mr. Town Manager, I apologize. I should have deferred to you first for any comments. But, no, no, it was my fault. I recognize you. I just want to have him have an opportunity to state anything that he needs to state and then we can defer to Peg if that's okay with you, Councilor.
Sure, yes.
Okay.
I don't know, you know, I'll take the, the questions as part of the commentary. I don't know about the airport. You know, we, we made a commitment to funding, but I don't think the funding is due for, for quite some time. And that may be a question that we inquire. But I, this, there are a variety of different USDA grants that, that are available. And my understanding was this is capital and I'm thinking more along the lines of the type of capital that you have before you. And maybe this, Ms. Dean can enlighten us whether that can be part of it. The value I see in this, when they, when they reached out, it came through the clerk and then was brought to Peg's attention and we all got involved in this, is, yes, we don't know exactly what's going to be ultimately picked out of capital. But you do have needs year over year. Talked about it earlier. This is a way in my mind to pick up some money that's otherwise going to be left on the table. And now you could say to me, Mr. Manager, maybe one, maybe two cruisers. But I think if you look historically, the way I've been told, I haven't found all of the information. I'm still relatively new at six months, that in the past, we've had studies that have said we should have more than two rotated in and out. We have some big capital needs. If you saw the growth rate on spending on DPW is slower than most all the other departments. It's been shortchanged over the last five years. If, if you don't like some of the vehicles that, that were on that proposed list, we have thought about it since the last meeting and come up with some alternatives. I mean, there's some large, heavy, I'd say Class II plow trucks that probably need to be replaced that go for approximately $185,000. And if you're getting 35% off a vehicle like that, I, I think at some point, you do have to have a little bit of faith in that we're trying to do what's in the best interest of the town. Because if we vote it down, that's just a potential of, of six figures that we're just throwing away. Now, we did do some checking and Ms. Dean just emailed an updated spreadsheet to us as we were working here. I know the USDA has come back and said we have capacity for additional money. So we could play around with the number of vehicles that are on there. And if, if I understood her latest reply from the USDA, we can go over the amount. Now, you might say, we'll spend more, but you get more back in return. When we are concerned about where we're getting our revenues and where our expenses are, if we have an opportunity to save money on something that in all likelihood we will do and we know we're going to have to tackle in the next couple of years, I think it's a prudent endeavor to, to, to go down that road. We could wait, but as you heard, some of these monies have to be spent by June. A lot of these things come due to COVID and disaster relief, things of that nature. They come quickly and we don't always have the, the ability to. the ability to turn these around. So we're trying our best to give as much information and try and make a, an educated guess on what the best vehicles that we feel we need. I understand the debate and the questions around some of them, but I do think you're going to need police cruisers. They're things that you put on thousands of miles and thousands of engine hours on these vehicles and they get beat on. Similarly, some of the DPW vehicles. So I think it's a worthwhile thing to look at and that's my take. Because if there's, we're going to spend $200,000 to $300,000 on our capital plan to get that, why not put the application in while we still can and see if we could get, you know, $100,000 back? Because I think that's what people would expect us to do. Because I think a lot of people in their personal lives, when, you know, I've thought about this and my explanation is not, you know, not to offend anybody, but I shop, I got three kids, and if I know I got to buy things this week, next week, we buy so much a month, something goes on sale, even though I might not have all the money to get it this week, I might get it if I can get a deal, if I can get, you know, I got a kid who eats like three pizzas a day. He's six inches taller than me. If they go on sale, I might grab a few extra ones because of it, because I know I'm going to save money in the long run. And that's analogous to what I see the USDA is doing here for us. They give us an opportunity to get something on sale, so to speak. What we ultimately put on that application for vehicles, I think that's something that, you know, it's worthy of further consideration. But I think the goal and the idea of utilizing this grant is of great benefit to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Town Manager. If I can continue?
Go ahead and then Counsel Steves will be after. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just if I can continue, question to Peg. In some of the documentation that you handed us, Peg, I didn't see it during the subcommittee, but I see it now. It says the grant assistance may be available for up to 75% maximum of eligible project costs, but yet this is for 35%. Can you explain why we, why you didn't try for the 75?
Yes. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, go ahead. I'd love to be able to answer also the question about the airport.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Okay, so, related to the 75%, it's up to 75%. The more rural and the smaller you are, the more eligible you are for funding. And so it's, it may be portrayed as up to 75%. But we are, when we get into the minutia of it, are, of, you know, eligible for that 35%. We also, within that paperwork, there are, they refer to multiple programs. And so, for instance, the one we are specifically applying for is the disaster-related assistance. And so it's the, that NOPA link that I gave you is for that specific notice of funding that was released related to the 2018 disasters that they're trying to spend the money down for right now. And so as the town manager mentioned, we need to spend the money by June, hence them asking us to please get the application in early April. And the real, the reality of being able to perform any work besides purchasing outright capital that would require any kind of environmental review at the airport, for instance, is probably unrealistic. So I guess if, the fair answer is, it would depend on what the specific proposal is at the airport, but if it's anything construction, it, we couldn't afford the time.
Thank you. If I can continue, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Peg.
Thank you. Peg, as I read one of your emails, the emails that went back and forth, you stated its residents are comprised of 59% low and moderate income earners, its downtown storefronts remain vacant or filled with non-commercial tenants, and there remains a disproportionate number of commercial properties not meeting code and compliance. So, to what the town manager said, and I certainly respect what was stated earlier, I think that's why we're here as a council. We have to say no. And to coin a phrase of a counselor, the buck stops here. It doesn't mean just because a police chief, fire chief, DPW director requesting capital money that we're going to say yes. You know, with the increase in, that we talked about this evening, especially with taxes, water, sewer, I'd rather see the $215,000 be put towards a bike trail or rail trail, whichever you want to call it. We're, as you stated, we're a, I don't want to say a poorer community, but we're, we have a lot of other needs and we're going to be driving around in new vehicles. It doesn't make sense to me personally. I can't, that's why I can't justify this this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two quick questions. First off, through you to Peg. So if we apply in April, how soon will we know?
We have to be able to provide a full application. It requires a lot of financial data that I'd have to work closely with the financial team on. So as soon as we have the application in full, that they're able to process it and approve us, we could be approved. So I can't make any promises, but if we have to spend it by the end of June, obviously we would hope to get it as quickly as possible.
Okay. And the related question is that if, so obviously this is covering their share, where is the money coming for our share if we end up getting this grant? We haven't talked about that and we probably should have. Would that be, would that be some stabilization or?
Mr. Town Manager, Karen, thoughts on that?
Ms. Harnoy is behind me, but the plan would be if we were to otherwise take care of these items in the capital plan, I, as I recall correctly, these were going to be funded with free cash and Ms. Harnoy is concurring. So if we fund them now, I would recommend that we do fund them with free cash and then we would get the, when the money came back in, we would put that aside.
Okay, because I would just clarify, because obviously we'd be funding them with what's left over free cash for this year, not next year.
This year's free cash, the certified free cash from the end of FY '21. And that is what we're proposing to utilize. The capital budget will be comprised of Chapter 90 monies, certain borrowings, certain revolving funds, but 1 point, I want to say 1.1 million dollars of free cash we were proposing to be used for capital. And a lot of it would be some of the vehicles. Other, the streets and bridges are going to be a combination, as I said, of other, the Chapter 90 monies and some borrowing.
Okay, and that doesn't, and if we're getting these things earlier, would we, would they be delivered before the end of our fiscal year? Or would they be carried over, say, in like July or August?
I wouldn't, I, honestly, I can't answer that question, but a lot of things operate on the fact that you have to show that you've started, or, you know, you have an invoice, you've ordered it, you've allocated the funds. I don't know specifically, that might be something that Ms. Harnoy or Peg, but typically if you can generate an invoice or a purchase order of things, that's sufficient to start the ball rolling on some things. The delivery may not happen. The same thing is true for some of the COVID and CARES monies. We have to, you know, get in the queue and order certain things to show. But that's the extent I can answer the question.
Okay, because I know I was also thinking about that fact that if we're doing, if we, if we decide to do this, whether, what the council ultimately ends up deciding to, we obviously will have to, if we vote for these things, obviously they'll have to come out of the capital, capital list. Because definitely not going to do four cruisers this year. That's not going to happen. Or some of these multiple other things, we just can't afford to do that. That's ridiculous. Because I can understand the argument with saving the money if we can get this grant money, if we're going to be buying them anyway. The issue, of course, is that we haven't decided we're going to be buying them yet. It's kind of a catch 22. So, that's all I had to say at the moment.
Peg, you had a response?
Yes, if I may, just the USDA's language was, they would secure the funds for us and just as the town manager said, we would have to have begun, you know, the purchasing process, understanding that, yes, we will not probably get vehicles delivered that quickly. And then in response to Counsel Catrona's comments about our demographics, the reason we are eligible is because of those demographics. The initial conversation started in December with them asking us to please state your priorities and the estimated costs of those priorities. Hence that's the list of our priorities estimated to be at somewhere largely up around $40 million to show them that we are, we have great needs and these, and yet these are the confines within which we exist. And so it's a way for them to help us be able to further leverage our money in a town where we obviously need it or can use it better than other towns.
Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I believe any grant that come in, we should take the opportunity and use it. I understand everybody's concern, the money we're going to put from the town, the difference, but this has come only once. I think coming from the disaster 2018, I believe, so I don't think it's going to come again. And we need police vehicle, we need fire truck, we need DPW truck. So we all need those equipment sooner or later. So why not taking the opportunity now and use the grant and wait till later then we have to pay the $330,000 in full? I understand some council concerned about the money and the budget and everything. You know, I'm a new counselor, but I believe, I believe aggressive decision is like, I don't know how to say, you know, in a proper way, like you're gambling in the right way. You're not going in the casino wasting it there, you know, you're going to lose them or not. You know, you put them in something you needed and you're getting $115,000 back guarantee almost, you know. So I'm not seeing where, why we have to be scared or worried not to take the opportunity of that grant now, but in one year or two year or three years down the road, we have to pay the full amount. Fire truck, 1982, still work, low mile, like the computer. All, nobody uses, still new, but you can't load the new software. You can't, it's not fast enough to get what you want to do or whatever. It's the same thing, truck. I believe we need an update equipment, police cruiser, all DPW need. We should be on top of those. That's a public safety. That's the more important, I think. And I'm going to support that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lazo?
I really do agree. I've been a pro-grant counselor for forever. This is the first time in my entire political career that I do not want to vote for a grant. It's almost like a ball and chain without knowing the final outcome. And I'm looking at this at 35%, probably the, one of the lowest grants that I've seen for the amount you're putting up. There's good arguments on both sides. As far as a piece of the pie is better than no pie, but this is, this is telling us what to do and what, I don't know, it, to me, it's restrictive and I'm not in favor of it, I won't be voting in favor of it. This got a tremendous amount of debate at general government, but I share the same skepticism as Counsel Steves on, well, are we going to do this? We don't know if we're going to do this, but this will, this will guarantee it's going to make the decision for you. And I don't, I'm not a fan of that. So tonight, I will be voting against this. And it's the first time, I think, in my political career I felt uncomfortable with a grant. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I've gone back and forth on this. This is, we had a long discussion at general government about this and I sat there and I listened and I heard everybody and I did some deep reflection. And I cannot justify spending this kind of money right now. And it's just because I don't know if I necessarily agree with the $1.1 million of free cash being used for capital. I think we have to have a long discussion as a council about what our priorities are and about how we want to spend that money. And 35%, if it was at 50 or above 50%, it'd be a much more of a slam dunk for me. But at 35%, where we have to put up $215,000, as other councils have said, we all have priorities in which we think $250,000 can be spent better. We've spent a lot of money in our departments. We've spent a lot of money this year as a council. I think this is the time in which we have to hang back, wait, and reevaluate during the capital budget time and really evaluate what our priorities are going to be for this coming fiscal year. Thank you.
Counsel Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Since I've been on the council, we've done, it seems like every meeting is just spend, spend, spend. And at some point, we're going to have to stop spending. Now, I look at this and I see that they want, it's $330,000 plus, and this is a 35% funding, so they will give us 115. We're going to have to spend 215. For me, 35% is no good. It's either got to be at least 75% funding or forget it. I mean, if it was 75%, that's a sweet deal. I would vote for that. But to say, oh, you're only going to get 35%, that to me is not, not enough. So I won't be supporting it either tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Through you, you know, I think some people may be stuck on the fact that it's 35%, not 50%. But the fact is, it's 35% free money that we'd be receiving or another community is going to be receiving. I understand it may be never the right time, but we have a fleet of vehicles that kept hearing that whole issue for the last 20 years. I thought it was a 1971 vehicle, by the way. Is that?
It is a 1971.
It is a 1971. Okay.
I don't know where the 1982 came from.
It's in the paperwork.
Yes.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that the year on that one. First of all, you talk about why we would spend this money. First of all, this money was spent through an entire pandemic. I mean, these guys worked all the way through the pandemic, didn't take a day off from DPW to fire, to the police. They need the vehicles. So we find ourselves in a few months or in a month or so voting on capital projects or capital items. And then we go, wow, we're just about to pay 100% now because it's never the right time. Never is the right time. Never the right time for a pavement management plan. Never right time to rebuild the schools. Never right time to do other projects around town that we've needed quite a bit of work on over these years. But somehow or another, this council decides to pick and choose what we want, which is great. But I will tell you this, you know, look at two interceptors. They need two interceptors. Recommended four. They need two interceptors every year. Or you're going to pay a lot more maintenance fees or somebody die. Fire, same thing there. Talk with the chief. How many brush fires do you have? Do you really need vehicles for that? Do you, mutual aid, whatever it may be. He gave me the numbers. DPW, was it 1999 vehicle? 21 years old. And they do work with it. Yeah, they drive around town, brand new vehicles that work, not being constantly maintained, costing us an arm and a leg to do some transfers to pay for costs. Yeah, I tell you, as a resident, I want to see where my tax money goes. Either that, pavement management plan, either that, some construction going on, either that, good schools for our kids so we can bring those young adults back, the perception of the town, the way it looks. I just ask that we don't, you know, if we're not spending that, I think the 35% keeps getting me. That's 35% free money. Paid for us, by us and the rest of the state and probably feds and all that kind of stuff. I'm just asking people to take a look at it. We did this for how many years? How do you have a 1971 truck sitting in our fleet? If anybody's had fleets before, vehicles, I know some of you have your businesses, you rotate your fleet of vehicles. You have to do that to maintain them. Not only that, cut down costs overall. It's not about what's happening this year, it's what's happening about next year. And I got to be honest, I said it when I, or 2018, if you want nice things, you have to pay for nice things. Can't keep pushing it off, oh, we're going to have the roads we have right now, we're going to have some of the vehicles and maintenance costs we're going to have right now. And I'm just telling you, my personal view, if the chiefs come to me and say they need a new vehicle for, they need to justify that. I think they pretty much justified. They held on to a vehicle for what? I'm not great at math, but 39 years? You got two interceptors that probably are running to the ground already. Stop, go, stop, go, stop, go. I don't care if they got 50,000 miles. You know how hard they run on them and what they have to do with them. And we depend on them. We look at DPW vehicles, we depend on them. People cry all the time about not getting stuff done. Well, if you have vehicles that go down, you're not going to get anything done. I'm just saying. And by the way, if I'm not mistaken, that DPW truck was part of the planning process last year. We put it on the shelf. So we're going to do it again this year and next year and the following year. And that 35% ain't going to be there. You're going to be paying 100%. So, yeah, you know what? As a taxpayer, I don't have a problem paying for first responder vehicles and vehicles that can maintain our, our and vehicles that can maintain our streets. That's it. But I'm gonna be voting yes on this all the way through. And that's all I got right for right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Last year, my priority was public safety and infrastructure. This year, my priority has been public safety and infrastructure. Next year, my priority is gonna be public safety and infrastructure. And it's my understanding that the public priorities are public safety and infrastructure. Counselor Adams is right. Last year, we put the DPW director through the wringer regarding her requested purchase for a truck. And we told her that there'd be another time. Well, I think this is the time. I think that the interceptors need to be replaced. You see them going back and forth through town, people complain about the roads. Well, the beating that these interceptors must be taking on the roads is they're flying back and forth as they need to, to answer our public safety requests, mean that the vehicles need to be replaced. The government is looking to give us $115,000. As the town manager said, if you've got a chance to buy a little bit extra, it may cost you a couple of dollars now. But if my priority says to me that I'm gonna be supporting two interceptors and assaulting machine, assaulting truck, dump truck, and the brush truck for the fire department, if I'm gonna be doing it this year and again next year, then my priority is do it now while we can get 35% of it paid off. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Markey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The fire truck, the brush truck was put on the capital budget for 2023, so I think you should wait till 2023. The interceptors, I personally would like to see the police do more footwork in town. I'd like to see them walking a beat downtown. I don't think we need a vehicle for every single police officers in town. I don't know, I know a lot of people say, I'd like to see my tax dollars go for this, for that. If you're on a fixed income like I am, you'd like to see your taxes held level because I can't, I can't pay it anymore, it's getting too much. So we spend too much, we tax and spend, that's all we do is tax and spend. At some point, we've gotta put a stop to it. Thank you.
Counselor Lazo.
Vehicles, wonderful subject. If I have to give you the history on the fire department, you'd probably get disgusted about it. I'm a public safety guy and infrastructure guy also. I ran on roads and sidewalks and in public safety, I sit as chairman of PPP. And this is no reflection on the people that are sitting in the chief's chair right now. But it was quite an education when you had a chief come to you and say, I need a brand new forestry truck because the old forestry trucks are 1972. They bought a brand new forestry truck. Did they get rid of the 1972 forestry truck? No. They send that one in the forest, not the new one, because the new one's too big to go in the forest. They don't wanna scratch it, whatever. The big tower truck we purchased, the giant double-gun tower truck, we sold it to the council as the savior if the high rise was on fire, we could, we could do this. And the old ladder truck, better known as the Bertha, can't do it anymore. We cut the ladder down, this, that, and the other thing. Bought the big tower truck, the Bertha stayed in the bay on the left. When people say that we're gonna backline a vehicle to replace another vehicle, I take it with a grain of salt. They might know how to fight a fire, but they don't know a damn thing about a truck. I know a lot about trucks. I know that you have a mechanic down at DPW, you pay a mechanic down at the Southbridge Police Department to maintain vehicles and to make sure you get maximum mileage out of it. There was a red pickup truck that we got rid of because it was a grant, we replaced it. We're gonna get rid of the truck, it's now plowing for school department. So when I talk with our department heads about vehicles and dump trucks, there was a backhoe. The backhoe, we have to replace it. And there was a guy named Jimmy P. Arpy on that committee that said, no, you don't. You just have to replace the pins and bushings. Well, they replaced the backhoe. The other one was so dangerous, you couldn't use. They never got rid of that of the backhoe. One went to the water company, one went to DPW. So as I sit here as an elected official, and you wanna talk about taxpayers, you wanna talk about being frugal, I'm not against replacing vehicles. When you talk about an ambulance and a cruiser, but when you're talking about dump trucks, I'm sorry, that's right in my wheelhouse. The DPW director's not gonna tell me about dump trucks, okay? I'm on the level playing field. And yes, we do not do a lot of repairs to our vehicles. I was told that the inspector's car couldn't get a sticker. And I voted to replace the inspector's car, only to find out that it did get a sticker. And we, we could've got away with bodywork and a repair on it. But if you wanna talk about sensationalism and salesmanship, we have great department heads. They work hard, they know their field, but we are the check and balance on what to do. We are the ones that sit here and say, yes and no. Town manager tonight, fabulous presentation on projections. Remember what controls the projection and the outcome of finance. The town council, the manager recommends, puts the budget together, we have great finance people. We are supposed to digest and ask the questions. And again, I'm gonna say, there are no bad questions. And tonight, we'll vote our conscience. I just sit here tonight and I just don't see 35% as a viable ball in chain to commit that we're gonna have to do this, we're gonna have to do whatever's written in that grant, okay? Once you sign on, the grant runs itself. The grant writer did a good job, she did a job. It's in front of us, the council, and we'll deal with it. And for the first time in my life, as a political elected official, I feel uncomfortable about a grant. It just, it's stunning to me, but then that's why I won't support this grant, because I feel that uncomfortable. I'm not arguing with my fellow counselors over whether we need to replace cruisers or whether we need to do infrastructure, they're absolutely right. I just don't think this is one of the ones I feel comfortable as an answer to that question. I agree with what they're saying, what needs to be replaced. And we should do a better job of maintaining our vehicles and buildings. We should be maintaining those vehicles and those buildings, but I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think they maintain those vehicles well since 1971 till now. I mean, how long you need them to maintain it? It was hand-built. That truck was, what I heard, it was hand-built, and now everything is different. I mean, I don't think we should just stop here. I think we should continue and improve, that's why we're here. The people trust us to get them in a better town, to get them safe if they're in fire, if it's accident, if it's DPW, they need a truck to move different thing and do different thing for the public. I believe this is the more important thing we need to support. They do maintain trucks, because if they don't maintain them, they wouldn't stay 30, 40 years, every truck. In the fire department or the DPW, they still have the old one, they use it somewhere else, that's great. That mean they maintain it and they was able to use it and continue to use it. It was support if it broke down or it's not handy at that time, they need it, they have something else to support the old one. So I think, I think this is priority for the citizen, for their safety. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
Just to follow up on some of the things, and I appreciate Counselor Lazo's candor. I will say this, and I agree, $215,000 is a lot of money, but we just freed up $300,000 for an airport. Right? Nobody had a problem with that. Matter of fact, I believe some people rushed to do the vote to utilize free cash. I understand the airport's supposedly gonna pay us back in 20 years and all that kind of stuff, and we're getting a bigger percentage, right? But we just freed up, and we're talking about budgets here. You know, next year, we're probably gonna be looking at doing the 5% to 8% on curbside. Is that a tax? Yep. Are we gonna vote no against it? We'll find that out. But I just don't hear, all I hear is, we need to cut spending. But wait, give me some ideas, where you gonna cut spending besides cruisers that we probably need? Forestry truck we may need, a 71 DP, or another 1999 vehicle that we probably need. So I don't know what the priorities may be at this point in time, but we do ask the town manager, we do ask the department heads to come to us with ideas. And I gotta tell you, I mean, I looked at the economic team downstairs. I mean, they provided, you know, close to $2 million worth of grants already this year to us, which we appreciate. It saved us a lot of money. And I think this, again, is gonna save us a lot of money. I would hate to see this go to budget or go to discussion, and then we end up getting everything that's on here without the 35% savings cut. That's all I got. Thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Markey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just through you, I just have one more comment. I'm not trying to cut spending here, I'm trying to cut overspending is what I'm trying to cut. Thank you.
To the town manager, at the beginning of this conversation, you said that you had some alternative ideas about maybe not a forestry truck this year because maybe we have some alternative pieces of equipment that we can get. So I'd like to explore that a little bit. When does this grant have to be put in?
I think, memory serves to be corrected, sometime in mid-April. Ms. Dean, I have to look, keep thinking.
Peg.
We weren't given a hard deadline, they said get it in by the beginning of April. I could, of course, contact them first thing tomorrow morning and ask what the absolute latest date to reconsider is.
Okay, no, what I'm saying is, there's a lot of feedback that has come back about maybe the types of equipment that may wanna be purchased and what we have. Let me speak, please, I have the floor. I gave you plenty of opportunity to speak.
Speak.
I'm hearing from Counselor to my left, I'm all for police cruisers. That's $107,000. 35% saving is $35,000. I'm for two cruisers, we need cruisers. So let's maybe refer back to the town manager, think about maybe some other things or topics that may come back. Why leave $35,000 on the table? A police officer's in that cruiser, eight-hour shift, that's their office. That's what they have to drive in on, right? We do not, I hear this all the time, every police officer has their own cruiser. No, they don't, that's not the way it is. And we talked, many councils up here talked about all these studies that are done, and we don't do anything with the studies and we don't follow through. I asked you to go back and look at the police department study that was done a number of years ago.
Mr. Chairman.
I have the floor.
I know, Mr. Chairman, but shouldn't.
Do you have a point of order?
I do.
What's your point of order?
Shouldn't you just step down? I don't have a problem with you.
Okay, I will step down as chair. Counselor Daniels, I would like to address the floor as a council instead of chairman, to have my voice. Very good. If you don't wanna hear from me, that's fine, Counselor Markey.
I have no problem.
Okay.
I just think properly, you should step down, correct? I have no problem with you talking.
Fine. I don't stop any council from speaking their piece. If you wish to have that procedural thing every time, fine. I'm fully supportive of this article because in the long run, in the long run, you're saving some money to the town of Southbridge. That's my point. We wanna play these little games about stepping down and all that, not to have a dialogue. My voice will not be shut up by any counselor to speak to the people. I'm for saving money for the town of Southbridge, fully for saving the money for the town of Southbridge. But let's be creative. There's creative solution here to come up and save some money to the town of Southbridge.
Counselor Lazo.
Just a quick point of clarification. I have a problem with the grant. I don't have a problem, the equipment can be discussed later. You know, we go through budget, we go through capital improvement, we'll discuss that. I have a problem with the grant, I'm voting against the grant. That's the way I feel about it, I'm not voting against the equipment. We can fight over the equipment later when we do capital improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a motion on the floor.
I move the question.
I'm putting it to the floor.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was just doing, Counselor. It's a motion on the floor, roll call, unless you had something else to address, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I don't know the procedural part. Can we push this back to general gov to have further discussion?
If you wish to refer back to general gov, you can make a motion to refer back to general.
I'll make a motion to refer back to the general gov.
We don't have time. April 1st or beginning of April, I don't know.
She said by the middle of May, April, we could get it done.
Yeah, she clarified.
This council can do anything they wanna do if they wanna get it done. We'll call special council meetings, whatever we have to do to get stuff done. There's a motion to refer back to general government, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, refer back, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Katrona.
No.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Dow.
Yes.
Counselor Jovan.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
No.
Counselor Markey.
No.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
And Counselor Steve.
No.
Motion carries for back to the general government. Council's forum, Counselor Ryan.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have a few thing. The park on Wallco Street, I sent some pictures recently for that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've already sent that to the DPW director and I've already seen the emails. Somebody will be looking at that.
It's not safe for the kids to play there. I wanna say sorry for the family of Lazo. Correct?
What are you doing?
Daniel, sorry for your family.
Oh, no, thank you.
That, that, okay?
That's fine, thanks, thanks, Joe.
And I'd like to hear from the town manager about the RMV, if we was able to get an answer regarding they're gonna sign the lease ten years with all these work we've been doing for them.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman, I've had correspondence via email. What we've been talking, right now, I'm working with Finance Department, MassDOT, to ensure that the bills are getting paid. I have to follow up, that's a good reminder. There's a catch-22 about them being in there and bills going on. I've spoken with our two legislators about the particular issue. They're very concerned and supportive of keeping the RMV here. When I say the legislators, I mean Senator Fatman as well as Representative Durant. They both asked me recently about capital projects, and they've talked about the registry and seeing if they can get funding from the state to cover those. Again, Representative Durant talked to me this morning via email about that issue. So the last word that we have from MassDOT is they wanna see the standards brought up with the improvements for the HVAC. As you know, we've come, gone out to bid on that particular, excuse me, put the RP together. As soon as we can make those improvements, we will be able to sit back down at the table. But the legislators recognize the significance and the importance, as we all do, of keeping it here. They wanna help us, and they, you know, have said to me if any way they can help defray the cost because they think it's really a state issue upgrading that HVAC. So we're working on it on all fronts.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Lazo.
Yeah, I would just like to, I'd just like to ask a question to the chair or to the manager. Tonight, we had a counselor, now that we're back in chamber, went outside and got herself locked out. What I'd like to do is, I ask the question, in past practice, all councils had keys to the town hall because we had meetings and sometimes, you know, you'd lock up and stuff. How do we get the councils to have each one of them get a FOB? I don't know, some have, some don't. I don't know if there's some rule change in the middle of the stream.
I would have to look into that, quite honestly. My understanding during COVID was the only people that had it were people who were the subcommittee chairs that were coming in and out. I can look into it.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I had spoken with the town manager quickly before the meeting, and I... Through you, I had spoken with the town manager quickly before the meeting, and I asked him why the department heads weren't here this evening at the podium. I think things went very well tonight. The computer systems seemed to work. We could hear the department heads very well. So I did like that. Going on to something else, we received an email today, and every council received an email today from Copelman and Page. And I was a little confused by it, Mr. Town Manager, and I don't know if you can help me explain. It says that we were reminded in advancement of Phase Four, Step One, the governor's reopening plan effective Monday, March 22, '21. In our opinion, public bodies may not, may, public bodies may but are not required to hold indoor in-person meetings or hearings with a total capacity limit of 100 persons, including staff and board members, rather than the 10-person limit. Outdoor meetings or hearings held in public are capped to 150. It's a bit confusing, I think, when we're closed, but this memo dated today is stating that we could have up to 100 people. I would presume that we still have to social distance, and the last I heard, it was up to the size of the room, I think, per the square footage, and maybe even the chairman might be able to answer that. I just found it confusing. If anybody can answer, I don't know.
I will just comment that this whole COVID-19 guidance from CDC, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, local officials, DPH, has been all confusing.
Okay.
That email I got today, that was the first I had seen of that, was today. This community is still in a yellow phase, which means it has a high prevalence of infection rate. So the DPD Director of Inspections, that's why we held off opening the town hall earlier. Again, we set up this hybrid. I think it went well with the council here. I would like to have more people in here, but I think until we, me personally, I think until we move into a green category, we should continue to operate just the way we did this evening. There was no technological issues with this. Everybody got to hear the department heads. It's a safer environment not having a lot of people in here. That's my personal opinion, that we continue and work this out at least through the month of April. All subcommittee meetings will be right here. With the ability of cable, we'll be able to broadcast through the two cameras out there, so the public will still have access, just as it was here. So whoever's running their subcommittee meeting will sit right here. That screen will be right there. Anybody that wants to participate will be on that screen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Therefore, there's access to the community, so.
If I can continue, can I? This evening, and it's a recommendation through you, I think, we have an executive session. We're about to go into the George Parent Room.
There will be no executive session this evening.
Oh.
So we can revisit that whenever you like.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let me move on. Again, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town manager, is it possible that we can take a look at showcasing some of the small businesses on the chart on the cable access channel? Some of the new local small businesses that are just opening in town? Something maybe you can take a look at? Thank you. Also, through the chair, to the town manager, Harrington Hospital is about to merge with UMass, and they're in that process now. Is it possible to reach out to Harrington Hospital? And maybe they, either they or UMass can possibly give us not only an update, but maybe some type of a presentation. They're one of our largest employers in town, and explain to us the partnership that they're about to go through. I know I've had some questions. I'm not sure if that's something you can look into.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to. I actually had, prior to this last surge of COVID, and we went back into the red, right around that timeframe, UMass and Harrington reached out to me, and I had a video conference with Mr. Moore and a representative from UMass Medical, talking about how they wanted to come in. They had an anchor community program. I may have mentioned in a previous council meeting where they like to get involved in the communities that UMass does. So now that Harrington is part of their family, they would like to become more involved in the community. So that did come up. But once we went into this additional, we'll call it surge of COVID, and we slid into the red over the winter, that kind of fell by the wayside, but I'm happy to reinitiate with Mr. Moore and see if we could get somebody to come in and give us a presentation, so.
Thank you. If I can continue?
Go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you. Just, I'd like to thank the Southbridge Business Partnership. As I drive around town today, I saw signs, a couple of them, that said shop, dine, shop, dine, buy, think. Southbridge, I think. It was, it's trying to promote the downtown businesses that we have in Southbridge. And it was a great sign, nice to see it, and I certainly thank them for doing, for putting that program on or for putting the signs out. I know we had a lengthy agenda tonight, so at the beginning of the meeting, thank you, Town Manager, for the budget presentation. It was excellent. I'm looking forward to working through the budget this year, and it's great to be back at the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan, you had something else?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. To you, actually, this, when you guys mentioned the Copelman and Page email, I did not get it. I've been having issues lately with my email. A lot of emails have been pouncing back, or I haven't been getting them. I know you, Mr. Chairman, have had some issues with that in the past. I don't know if maybe the best plan would be for me to move over to the town email system or, because I didn't get that Copelman and Page email, for example, today. It didn't show up in my email.
We'll have the town manager's office just double-check the Copelman and Page, make sure they have the right address. I do know that I sent out on one of the town council, like, group, I got a kickback of, it could have been one of yours, then I had the, I had Yvonne send it out again because it got kicked back saying that I had an invalid address for somebody, so I'm not sure if it's yours or not, so we'll have them check out the email distribution list to make sure it's correct.
I remember that email, Mr. Chair, and it was mine. And it seems that, I don't know if it's some of the groupings or not, because I know you, it's like sent out in a batch group.
Yep.
Some of them have the right email address and others do not. Others have the JayRyan@SouthbridgeMass.
So, we'll just make sure that it gets cleaned up because they could have just the wrong, because that group, and I just, it was easier for me to have Yvonne send it out to everybody on behalf because it did get kicked back, so. So it was yours. I wasn't sure who's it was.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it, yeah.
Counselor Steve?
Thank you. I just had a couple of quick things I just wanted to bring up. One is that since we are talking about budget hearings and stuff like that, I just wanted to mention that the Southbridge School public budget hearing, the public schools budget hearing is going to be on April 13 at 6:30. That's entirely remote. I guess the details haven't been formally listed yet, but it is on the website. And the also other thing I wanted to mention was the library's gardening programs. For those, this is the ideal time, but a lot of people kind of trapped at home trying to find something to do and get outside and get to enjoy some of the sun, and they've been running really well. I've caught a couple of them. You can learn a lot of interesting stuff about them. And there's still two more left, there's one on April 6, which is in raised beds, and on April 20 is on organics. And they're being sponsored by our library and several other libraries in the area. So they're also both online at 6:30 on Tuesdays. And that's all I had.
Thank you. Counselor Marketti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say that last week, I took a walk downtown with Peg, Dean, and Counselor Adams, and people, and people from the BSC group, and one of the interns that Peg is hiring. And it was, it was a very interesting walk around the downtown area. We walked Main Street, Central Street, Main Street, down around, all the way over to Capello Field. Downtown is, you know, it's, it's like, I'd never hung out down there, so you really don't know what's going on down there until you go down there, and you see all the traffic, and you see people hanging around. And some people are like, wow, I don't know if I'd want to run into them in a dark alley, but it was interesting. The guy, I have to give the guy credit, he has a lot of optimism for the downtown area. I know there's a lot of people in Southbridge who were born and raised here, and they say it's just not the same as it was when they were little and going to school here, but this guy seems to think he can turn it around, and I'm looking forward to what he can give us and what he can bring to the table. And hey, it's the future. We got to do something downtown. Let's do it. And it was enlightening. The other thing that I wanted just to ask about is with the town election coming up, I just wanted to make sure that we have some kind of a plan for, because it's going to be tough this year having to drive out there, and I just want to know if there's any way we can get some funding for mail-out votings. I don't, probably can't do early voting at the town hall, but if there's something we can do for early voting where they're mailing it out, that's something I hope that we can look into. Thank you. That's all.
Are you addressing that question to a specific individual, Counselor? So that it could be followed up on?
Okay. If the town manager would like to follow up on that, I'd appreciate it.
I just want to make sure we're clear, Counselor.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it. I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
If I could, through you, to the previous speaker, are you looking for information about early voting? I don't think we could, we can do that in this particular election. Not 100% sure, but I think you said a plan, so are you looking for information in getting the word out? Could you, or better yet, why don't we talk tomorrow? You could send me an email.
Okay.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, I've got a few things tonight. April 1 sends the winter ban, parking ban on April 1. Just want to remind the residents of that. I will say is, it's interesting that I just bring this up. I had a person that doesn't even live in this town say how much work has actually happened in this town. If you've gone down Central Street, Central Street Parking, go behind Central Street Parking and take a look at it. And look at all the work the private industry is actually doing from Wells to Central Street Parking, the lot, and all the work that's happening up and down the Main Street and some of the roads we did on the side. This has to do with the constant effort the last few years of pushing things forward. I would also recommend that if anybody, especially counselors, and I'm not trying to, I'm trying to educate. If you've never gone to the fire department and taken a ride and spent the day with them, I would recommend you do that. If you've never gone and took a ride with the police department, I would recommend you do it. You learn so much from what those guys and gals do on a daily basis. It's unbelievable. It's not shocking to me, as far as a counselor is concerned, of what our history is as a town, although I've only lived here for 10 years. And yeah, you're right, I agree with the counselors, and some of the residents, never going to be like it was 20 years ago because we don't have that anymore. You have direct deposit, you have all these other good things that you can sit in your house and knock it out, out the park. But I will say this, I have to give credit to these small businesses that are in this town that are making a difference every single day. Central Pizza, they're redoing it. Look at the place on 111, over on Central, the breakfast nook that's over there now. Take a look at those things, I would recommend. And as a counselor, I don't need permission to go, can I take a camera? I mean, I'll ask request, take a camera to interview small businesses in this town. This business, this place is not about just pizzas and the airport. This place has a lot of culture around it. And I'll tell you what, I'm proud of the staff and all the work they've been doing, and I appreciate every, all the hard work they've been doing and not being recognized for what they've been doing. And it's not, you guys, I'm not saying just counselor, I'm just saying, these guys have been open, through the pandemic, been working here. The PD's still been working. They've been dealing with patients that had COVID, and they've exposed themselves multiple times. So I just want to say thank you to all those guys and gals that have busted their behind during this period of time while we sit comfortably in our houses. So I just want to throw that out there. But if you do, I'm sure the fire chief and the police chief would more than willing to take you on a ride, spend the day with those guys and gals. Another thing is, today is National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and I want to pay tribute and thank those men and women that didn't receive the welcome home. We owe them a big gratitude because as a younger veteran, I probably wouldn't have received what I received when I came home because of them. And they got the brunt of a very bad time, bad timing. So I just want to say thank you to them for all the work that they did and those 58,000-plus that paid the ultimate sacrifice that's on the wall in DC. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I have one thing tonight, and that is, I'd like the indulgence of the council and their advice. I have a citizen that would like to address a subcommittee, probably Gen Gov., regarding a potential bylaw change, which would be 7-406, which is the snow removal bylaw. I promised that the constituent that I would bring it up tonight, and I'm just looking for a potential agenda item and a time in the future to address that issue. Some cognizant points were brought up, particularly among the, especially among the amount of time that it takes to, for a resident to remove snow from the sidewalks, and that issue would be addressed. Okay. Thank you very much. I'll, when we find out about it, I'll notify the constituent, and they can make an appearance.
Counselor Steve?
We actually did talk about doing something about changing that particular bylaw, probably a year and a half ago, and it didn't go anywhere. But we can certainly bring it up. Absolutely.
Very good. That's all I have. The next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, April 5, 2021, here in council chambers.
Thank you. We did have an executive session scheduled for this evening. However, due to my oversight, I neglected to put in the collective bargaining unit that would have been discussed this evening as well as further clarification and given the hour of the night, so I think it's best that we probably postpone it anyway. So it will be postponed until next week. Monday, April 5 will be our next meeting, indeed, that Counselor Daniel, I'm sure, would have announced. Would it be possible to throw it in front of the council? Well, I was just going to ask the council that. I was just going to say. Mr. Town Manager?
I was just saying, the executive session items were put on at my request. I just, I confirmed something with Town Council tonight, and he had asked me to defer, and they're not time-sensitive. There are more informational updates for the council, so I think we can do it without issue on next Monday night, so.
If the preference is to do it at 6 o'clock, we can? Or we can do it after?
I would prefer that, yeah.
I mean, we don't have an extensive agenda next week, so it's not, so either way, it'll work. So I'm just looking to the rest of the council.
I think it's a good idea. My question, can we do it in open forum like this in here?
Probably can't do it here, but we could probably go down to the veterans' room. It's big enough that we can all spread out into that one room. So that would be, that would be a bigger room for us to spread out in, but, okay. So 6 o'clock, okay for that? All right. So we'll schedule that at 6:00, and then, an hour enough or a half hour?
I think you probably need a half an hour.
So we'll schedule it for 6:30 then?
Next Monday.
Next Monday. And that's our regular meeting at 7:00 PM, so, okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Roll call. Mayor, you're still hanging in there? Thank you, Mayor.
I'm here.